All right. Good morning, everyone. Seeing that we have a large set of board members present, Brooks, will you please call the roll to establish our quorum?
Member Burr. President Darling Hammond.
Here.
Member Fatah.
Here.
Member Glover Woods.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Navo.
Here.
Member Patil Brownson.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Rucker.
Here.
Vice President Strauss.
Here.
Member Sun.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Terrific. Thank you very much. I hereby call the February 2021 meeting of the State Board of Education to order at 8:32 a.m. I'd like to commence by saluting the flag. Member Fatah, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And at this point, I want to be oath to Eileen Strauss. And when... Sue is here. Sue is here? Yes. Oh, there you are. Very good. And to Members Sue Burr. Excellent. This is perfect timing. So I'd like to ask you both to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and then Eileen, you say your name, and Sue, do solemnly swear.
I...
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Sue. We know that you will do all of those things because you've been doing them for us for so many years, and we are thrilled that you'll be able to spend another year guiding this State Board of Education. And so now I'm going to give our general announcements. The following item on the agenda has an addendum. On Item 2, the Every Student Succeeds Act, Authorization to Pursue Flexibility on or a Waiver of Assessment Accountability and School Identification and Federal Funding Flexibility Requirements. Members of the public who call in for public comment should view the live stream of the meeting to know at what time public comment will occur for each item. Public comment may be provided by dialing the phone number, entering our participant access code, and then following each of the operator's prompts. We will post that number and the code at each moment where comments are invited. Upon dialing in, callers will be added to a caller queue. The operator will notify callers when it is their turn to provide public comment. We will also ask callers to please turn down the speaker volume of their computers if they're following the live webcast to avoid an echoing effect. Public comment will be limited to one minute for each speaker. And Item 3 is the General Public Comment Item during which members of the public may provide comment on matters that are not specifically listed on the board's agenda. Board members, please mute your microphones when not speaking. Keep your cameras on at all times, except during the scheduled breaks. And ensure that we maintain a quorum throughout today's virtual meeting. For each item on the agenda, there will be an opportunity for you to raise your hand using the Zoom participant window if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment. And at this point, Item 1 is the State Board Priorities item. And I'm going to make a few comments just about kind of where we are in the process of things. I've got a how to manage my technology here for a second. So give me a moment, please. So I just want to launch us into this meeting by thanking I'm hearing an echo. If people could mute their lines in case that's causing the echo, that'd be great. I want to, of course, start by acknowledging where we are in the school year in California, thanking all of the educators throughout our state and all of the nutrition support staff and custodians and bus drivers and everyone else who has been engaged in trying to figure out how to manage our way through this pandemic. We've had an extraordinary year. We've had all kinds of outreach from schools to communities, everything from meals to making sure that households have connectivity and students have devices, inventing ways to engage in distance learning where that is necessary, and working hard, as we are doing now, to try to get more and more districts back for in-person instruction, even as we've kind of negotiated this multiple spikes in the pandemic that have influenced our ability to offer instruction in the ways we would normally want to do it. There are efforts underway now, of course, with billions of dollars being appropriated by both the legislature and through federal funding for schools that has recently arrived to implement safety measures, including funding for, you know, personal protective equipment, safety supplies, ventilation. Over 1,000 schools in 41 counties are implementing school-centered COVID-19 testing now with the State Valencia Branch Laboratory. The state testing capacity and support at schools is the most robust in the nation and, you know, continues apace with growth in access and successful piloting of school-based real-time testing in districts up and down the state, urban, suburban, rural districts. We have new transparency and accountability measures, including data reporting directives and corresponding maps that empower families and school staff to know about their school reopening status. Over 300 school districts have received direct technical assistance from the State Safe Schools Team. And that engagement from that team with dozens of districts has been in response to reports received from thousands of parents and school staff. We've launched the Safe Schools for All Hub as a one-stop shop for school leaders, staff, and families. The hub includes playbooks and guidance on everything from privacy issues related to testing to establishing safe and stable groups in high school settings. We are hopeful that we will be seeing, you know, much more substantial school reopenings. Of course, vaccinations are increasing all across the state as well. But with all of that, with all of these efforts, it is still the case that 95% of our students are in districts that are in the purple tier of infection rates, that about 80% of students are still in remote learning in some fashion, and that we have a very intense and long, wet road to go to reopen schools fully in the state of California. So it is in the context of that set of both initiatives and variables that we contend with that we will be taking up the question about how to understand and act on our students' learning and progress. Of course, our districts have been developing and have used instructional continuity plans to work toward a way to be sure that all kids are engaged in learning where, to the greatest extent possible, using online capacity where that is necessary and using formative and summative assessments to support and monitor their progress. So we're proud of all of the extraordinary efforts that have gone on in the state. We want to tackle today the question of how to both continue our progress, meet the needs of students, those who have experienced significant trauma, those who are in need of accelerated learning opportunities, both during the school year and into the summer and into the next school year. And I look forward to working with the board, with the members of the public, who have been sharing their thoughts and views with us about the path forward as we work through the issues that we face today, which are about both our own plans and the ways in which we will communicate with the federal government about the requirements that are in law in the Every Student Succeeds Act. With that, I want to take up action on the draft minutes of our January 2021 meeting. And we will also open the phone line to the public comment queue while we're doing that. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item can do so by calling the number shown on the public comment slide. And we'll see if that slide is coming up. While we are waiting for any members of the public to call in, do I have a motion from a board member to approve the January 13, 14, 2021 State Board of Education Draft Preliminary Report of Action Meeting Minutes? I move approval. Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Thank you very much. So with that, we don't have the slide up yet for public comments. So I want to ask whoever's in charge of that to get the slide up for public comments so that when we turn to that, people will have been able to dial in.
We're working on that right now.
Thank you very much. And so meanwhile, we'll call a roll, call vote on the approval of the minutes. That's great. There's the public comment slide. And Brooks, will you please call the roll for the vote on the minutes?
Member Burr.
Here. Or yes.
Both. President Darling Hammond.
Yes.
Member Fatah.
Yes.
Member Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Navo.
Yes.
Member Patil Brownson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Rucker.
Yes.
Vice President Strauss.
Yes.
Member Sun.
Yes.
Passing unanimously.
All right. Item 2 is the Every Student Succeeds Act, Authorization to Pursue Flexibility on or a waiver of assessment accountability and school identification and federal funding flexibility requirements. And this item does have an addendum. The CDE recommendation is to request the State Board of Education to take action as deemed necessary and appropriate. And I think Chief Deputy Superintendent Gregson will provide some opening comments, which will be followed by Deputy Superintendent Maves and Assessment Director Vang.
Yes. Good morning, President Darling Hammond, members of the State Board. I'm Stephanie Gregson, Chief Deputy Superintendent of Public Instruction. President Darling Hammond said, in many ways, this past year has no predating for us all. And as we turn the discussion to assessment, there will be many points to discuss on all the different aspects of assessment in this unique year. And as the discussion progresses, we ask that you keep students at the forefront of your conversation. Our students are resilient, strong, and courageous. They have experienced a year like no other. We would love to pursue a general waiver, and at the same time, we understand the importance of collecting data to measure the impact of distance learning. We also know the most valuable metrics we can use to understand a student's academic process will always remain the ones that are collected by educators and schools on a regular, ongoing basis in classrooms, even virtual, where individual relationships with students are fostered and supports are provided in real time. We recommend the State Board take action on providing full flexibility and choices for our local education agencies, including looking at extending timelines and approving submitting a waiver for the participation rate. The pandemic has afforded us the opportunity to reflect on our systems in many ways, specifically how we measure student learning. This is an opportunity for us to take steps on an assessment approach that represents a system that lifts up, educates, and cares for every student. Our presentation today will provide the necessary background and context information to help inform your discussion. And so now I'd like to hand off to Dr. Mao Vang, Director of the Assessment Development and Administration Division. Dr. Vang?
Thank you, Dr. Gregson. I will begin by sharing my presentation. First. Okay. I believe you can see the slide now. Thank you, Dr. Gregson, Deputy Gregson, President Darling Hammond, and board members. Again, I am Mao Vang, Director of the Assessment Development and Administration Division. The item before you is both an action and information item. Later in my presentation, I will be joined with with, joined by Rachel Maves, our Deputy Superintendent of Public Instruction of the Instruction and Measurement Branch at the University, at the California Department of Education. And in addition, we have Cindy Kazanas, Director of the Assessment, Measurement, Accountability, and Reporting Division, Jerry Winkler, a Director of the Educational Data Management Division, and our other guests, Mary Ann Arcella, who is an Executive Director at ETS, our testing contractor, and Tony Alper, Executive Director of the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. They will be available to assist with questions. So this presentation will include the following topics: federal and state requirements, preparations that we have made for spring testing, and stakeholder feedback we've gathered along the way, and flexibilities offered by the U.S. Department of Education. Since this letter is so new, I will begin with a quick overview. As President Darling Hammond alluded to earlier, but I will just do a quick overview of the flexibilities offered from the U.S. Department of Education. So on February 22nd, two days ago, the U.S. Department of Education did send a letter to states indicating that they can request a waiver to take advantage of the flexibilities offered by the U.S. Department of Education for the 2020-21 school year of the accountability and school identification requirements in the Every Student Elementary and Secondary Education Act, or ESEA, as amended in the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA. States receiving this waiver would not be required to implement and report the results of its accountability system that includes calculating progress toward long-term goals and measurements of interim progress or indicators, and annually meaningfully differentiate among its public schools using the data from the 2020-2021 school year. In addition, the states that are granted the waiver would also not be required to identify schools for comprehensive support and improvement, targeted support and improvement, and additional targeted support and improvement based on data from the 2020-2021 school year. It would be required to continue to support previously identified schools in the 2020-21 and 22 school year, resume school identification in the fall of 2022, and ensure transparency to parents and the public as a, so as a condition of receiving the waiver, states will continue to publicly report disaggregated chronic absenteeism data for the 2020-21 school year. Furthermore, the U.S. Department of Education is recommending that states implement assessment flexibility, including administering a shortened version of its statewide assessments, offering remote administration where feasible, and/or extending the testing window to the greatest extent practicable. So of the flexibilities that the U.S. Department of Education has recommended regarding assessments, California has already taken the following steps: administering a shortened version of the Smarter Balance Summit of Assessments for English Language Arts, Literacy, or ELA, and Mathematics, which the State Board of Education approved for the implementation at their November 2020 meeting. And the second component, offering remote administration, which is already available to California local educational agencies for all of the California assess, for the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, or CASP, and the ALPA, which is the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California. So on the following slides, I will cover the federal and state requirements. So summative assessments overall are a necessary component of comprehensive, of a comprehensive assessment system. And the results that are provided, they provide important academic data at the state level for decision-making regarding reporting policies, or reporting policies and programs, as well as identifying professional development needs. So the primary purpose of statewide assessments, assessment testing, statewide summative testing overall, is to provide data on student learning in schools and local educational agencies to inform their continuous improvement efforts, as well as create actionable change. ESSA requires states to administer annual summative assessments as a condition of an approved federal ESSA plan and the receipt of federal ESSA funds. So under federal ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, states must administer annual statewide assessments in reading language arts and mathematics to all students in grades 3 through 8 at once in high school, as well as in science at least once in grades 3 through 5, once in 6 through 9, and once in 10 through 12. So state and federal law require that local educational agency administer a state test of English language proficiency to eligible students in grades, in kindergarten through grade 12. ESSA also requires that a state annually and meaningfully differentiate all public schools and the requirements to identify schools for comprehensive and targeted support and improvement, and additional targeted support and improvement based on data from the current school year. And then furthermore, ESSA also requires additional report card provisions related to certain assessment and accountability in Sections 111H, based on data from the current school year. Following up with state requirements, so to meet federal and state requirements, we have, in terms of our assessments, we have the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, or CASP, as defined in California Education Code, Sections 60601 through 60649, include, which include the following. We have the Smarter Balance Summit of Assessments and the California Alternate Assessments for English Language Arts and Mathematics in grades 3 through 8 and 11, and the California Science Test and the California Alternate Assessments for Science in grades 5 and 8 at once in high school. All first-time grade 12 students who have not yet taken a science assessment in high school are required to take the CASP or the California Science Test or the California Alternate Assessment for Science for those eligible students. And then we also offer the California Spanish Assessment for Spanish Reading Language Arts as an optional test. Furthermore, the, the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, or ALPA, as defined in Education Code Sections 313 and 60810, include the initial ALPA, the summative ALPA, and the alternate ALPA, which is still in development. And on this slide, we have state requirements regarding the California School Dashboard that's pursuant to Education Code Section 5206.5. And with that, we need to, with, states need to adopt with the adoption and reporting of performance on state and local indicators on the California School Dashboard for each local educational agency and performance criteria for those local educational agencies for assistance and intervention. So this, for the 2020-21, 2021 Initial and Summit of Assessments Testing Windows, this displays the initial and summative assessment timelines that we have. The statewide testing windows here are how we typically launch our assessment programs. And one change this year is the California, the CASP, a Smarter Balance Summit of Assessments for ELA and Mathematics. So in order to change to the adjusted blueprints and approved by the State Board of Education during the November meeting, these assessments did not launch until February 22nd, two days ago. As provided in this table, our assessment system operates year-round with pretty much minimal downtimes. So local educational agencies select their own testing window within the available statewide testing window. Although California has been preparing, adjusting, and learning how to administer assessments during the pandemic, we know that there are varying circumstances across the state. And really, for some, it will be very difficult to administer assessments if it is not safe to do so at all in person. So at this time, I want to share a little information with you about, there are about 79 local educational agencies that have opened up their CASP testing windows. And all LEAs can administer the summative ALPA. So I'm pleased to report that students are taking the tests. The following tests have been started. There's been two Smarter Balance Summit of Assessments for Mathematics started, two CASP or Science Assessments, four California Alternate Assessments for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and 207 California Alternate Assessments for Science Performance Tasks started, and over 451,000 summative ALPA assessments have started. So since the summative ALPA just opened on the first, people are, on February 1st, they are moving forward with that one. So there are no tests started yet for the Smarter Balance Summit of ELA, or English Language Arts, Literacy, or the California Spanish Assessment. So this is a reflection of the tremendous amount of work and preparation on the part of the local educational agencies, our test site coordinators, our LEA coordinators, and staff that they continue to, and by every means possible, support California students and their learning. And staff that they continue to and by every means possible support California students and their learning. So I will highlight some key events, um some events that brought us to where we are today. Just to uh quickly reflect back that in March two thousand twenty, California request requested and received approval from the U S Department of Education. To waive that the testing requirement. Along with reporting and accountability as well, but I'll focus on that um in this slide. Also, in June two thousand twenty, uh Senate Bill uh ninety eight was passed that provided funds for an extension of the twenty. Um nineteen, twenty, twenty summative out pack as an optional test for the purpose of reclassification. And COVID related activities. Uh along with that, um. It required local educational agencies and schools to provide valid and reliable data for their improvement plans and the public to inform student progress. It prohibits the California Department of Education from publishing state and local indicators on the two thousand twenty California School Dashboard. And required C D E or California Department of Education to report in Calpads. Valid and reliable data collected in the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty school year that would have been included in the two thousand twenty dashboard. Coinciding with these activities, um was the approval of S B eight twenty. That extended the initial out pack testing window of thirty calendar days from enrollment by an additional forty five calendar days. So during this time, a local educational agencies rallied and ensured that ninety percent of eligible students were assessed. Sixty percent doing so remotely. So San Diego Unified School District served as a model. Example assessing ninety seven percent of their students through one hundred percent remote administration. And in October, um two thousand twenty, the U S Department of Education advised states that assessment waivers. Will not be considered for spring two thousand twenty test administration at that time and including until today. So to address and lessen the testing burden on local educational agencies in November, our California. Um State Board of Education did approve the adjusted blueprints for the smarter balanced summative assessments in English Language Arts. Uh literacy and mathematics. So in order to be responsive to the field uh and to ensure that safe assessment options when in person was not available and continue to provide lia's with. Flexible options within our control in December two thousand twenty through January. The following spring administration considerations were made. Um we have in person and remote computer based um English Language Arts Assessments, Mathematics, Science. And summative uh ALPAC. And for in person uh administration only for the California Alternate Assessments for English Language Arts. Mathematics, Science and continue the locally determined English Language Proficiency Assessments. As we made the decision to postpone the alternate ALPAC Operational Field Test until the two thousand twenty one, twenty two school year. And that leads us to uh two days ago when we received the. Guidance from the U S Department of Education on the uh following of uh topics of accountability and school identification. Transparency and public reporting, along with the assessment flexibilities. And with that, I will um turn it over to Rachel Maves to continue presenting. Rachel?
Thank you, Ma. I appreciate that introduction. Part of our hope during that time was, one, to situate assessments um correctly within the comprehensive. Um assessment package that you see within districts and understanding on the necessity of those pieces. But then also to level set with what our state and federal requirements are as we consider um the flexibilities that are being offered. So I have the distinct pleasure and thank you, Ma, for giving me the space to share this part. Um of discussing some of the preparations for spring assessments. This year has presented and I would argue continues to present unfathomable cha- challenges. Yet in the midst of contexts that often feel chaotic, we continue to see some bright spots. Engaging with the field with our states dedicated and committed testing coordinators. Calpads Directors, Assessment Directors, Teachers and Administrators in iterative improvement processes. To ensure to the best of our ability readiness for spring testing has been an unbelievable bright spot. On the following slides, I will cover a summary of some of these preparations. Next slide? Ma or Alex? Next slide?
Get in there, sorry. They sometimes when I'm not presenting, it sticks.
So first, we're going to look at the implementation of the adjusted blueprints. Testing time has been a key concern among all stakeholders. In November of two thousand twenty, the State Board of Education approved the use of adjusted blueprints for the smarter balanced summative E L A and Mathis tests. The timing of the approval, which was in advance of the formal E D guidance. Was required to allow sufficient time for development and administration. With the S V U approval in place, the C D E directed the state assessment contractor, E T S. To implement the adjusted blueprint in the California Assessment System. Ma, could you go to the next slide, please? We estimate that the adjusted blueprints will reduce testing time in E L A and Mathematics by one and a half to two hours depending on the grade. We focused on adjusting the E L A and Mathematics summative tests because these tests impacted. The most students and also are the longer tests compared to the other CASP assessments. Now, could you go to the next slide, please? The other non-smarter balance blueprints have not changed as many of them are already much shorter. The C A A's for E L A and Math, C S A and CASP are one to two hours long. The C A A for Science is an online assessment administered to students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. Whose individualized education program indicates the use of an alternate assessment. Test examiners administer the assessment to students one on one. Eligible students take the C A A for Science in Grades Five and Eight in one time in high school. Next slide? The C A A for Science consists of four embedded P Ts administered to students as close to instruction as possible throughout the school. The table displays the estimated testing times for summative ALPAC. Again, this assessment is already much shorter in terms of estimated total testing time. Summit of ALPAC is less than two hours for the lower grades and up to three hours for the upper grades. Ma, next slide? In fall of two thousand twenty, C D E committed to ensuring flexible options for assessment administration. When it became clear some LEAs would be unable to provide in-person instruction for stu- for students. We heard overwhelmingly from the field the importance and the need to allow additional time to administer. The optional summative ALPAC for reclassification purposes. Additionally, the flexible options allowed LEAs to administer the ALPAC initial. And smarter balanced interim assessments whether students were in person or remote. LEAs had the option of testing students in person following their local health and safety guidelines. Or testing students remotely with using the electronic devices and tools they used for distance learning. Next slide? These fall administrations led to multiple opportunities to LEAs, C D E and E T S. To engage in collaborative discussions regarding the assessment experience. Using the feedback from the field, we further refined and adjusted our processes in preparation for the spring assessment window. This included integrating a remote administration feature directly into the E T S delivery system. Having a clear understanding that students must use the secure browser to take the assessments, whether it is in person or remotely administered. Which provides the appropriate appropriate level of test security that will allow us to maintain the assessment's validity and reliability. And it also prompted active engagement with LEAs and with technology companies such as Google, Apple and Microsoft. In the development and testing of the embedded remote administration features. The remote testing functionality includes video monitoring, video calling and messaging. Somebody will have to give you a live demonstration because it's pretty neat what we've been able to develop. Test administrators or test examiners can view students testing in real time. By video while also monitoring each student's progress through the tests. The video feed is similar to the grid or thumbnail view of an outline meeting application. As in previous administrations, the test administrator can pause the student's test at any time. Whether they are conducting a remote or in-person administration. The test administrator and the student can communicate directly with each other through the test delivery system. By a one-to-one video call or a text message. The test administrator can also send out a broadcast message to all students in the testing system. Videos showing the remote administration process are available at CASP slash E L. Uh sorry, slash ALPAC YouTube channel. Next slide? So over the course um of this time, the C D E held monthly assessment stakeholder meetings to continue to gather feedback from our stakeholder groups. E T S joined C D E in presentations at the Regional Assessment Network Meetings. Which included statewide meetings in January, thirteen regional meetings, January through February and five training sessions. We received feedback directly from stakeholders, including the California Information Technology and Education Association. Association of California School Administrators, the California Parent Teacher Association, California Bilingual Educators Association. Californians Together and the California Small Schools Association. During our discussions with stakeholders and Regional Assessment Network members. We shared information about the proposed plans and asked them to share their members' experiences with the fall administration. As well as suggestions for improving the spring plans. Earlier this year, we asked LEAs to provide input on their technology readiness and their preferences for testing window options. The technology readiness survey was targeted to L E A technology managers and L E A testing coordinators. We asked about the types and the number of devices that their students use for distance learning. And for taking the assessment as well as their instructional plans for the remainder of the school year. We distributed the survey in January and received five hundred and ten responses for the survey. Respondents indicated that the majority of their students, eighty percent, are using devices provided by the L E A. Most, seventy one percent, plan to continue their current instructional approach for the remainder of the school year. Approximately two thirds indicate they are currently in distance learning. In February, we asked L E A superintendents and test coordinators to respond to a survey on testing window options. I'll talk about the results of that survey later on. Next slide? Next slide? From our discussions, we placed the input on the spring plans into two categories, the process and testing. With regard to process, they asked, have an easier process to notify parents and guardians. Add more communications and support for students, parents and guardians and educators. Reduce or eliminate handling of paper test materials. And keep remote administration features like existing instructional tools. With regard to testing, they recommended waive testing or make it optional. As an example, eliminate accountability and participation requirements. Resolve equity concerns for students to receive instruction, attendance, engagement and technology as examples. Next slide? We u- we also used our learnings from the fall administration to improve our training and communications for the spring two thousand twenty one administration. We simplified the parent guardian notification process that was noted on the previous slide. We use feedback from parents, guardians, educators and administrators to simplify the communication tools and processes for notifying parents about the test administration. We developed a solution for the summative ALPAC K two writing as it requires students to show their writing skills on paper or physical format. We worked with test examiners and assessment design experts to allow students to show their work while reducing the test security concerns. Of having parents and student students manage the paper test materials. We developed additional training materials and created a spring administration webpages. I'll show you some of the additional training materials in the upcoming slides. Next slide, please? Communication has been a key component of our iterative processes. It was important to provide as much information as possible to LEAs, educators, parents, students and stakeholders. So that they too could make informed decisions at the local level. Building on the communications and training opportunities from the fall administration. E T S, our assessment contractor, held a series of pre-test workshops to ready the L E A testing coordinators for the spring two thousand twenty one administration. Prior to each workshop, the L E A testing coordinators completed prerequisite online courses to learn about ALPAC. CASP and the California Assessment System. Participants then completed three pre-test workshop sessions. We offered three pre-test workshop sessions in December and three pre-test workshop sessions in January. Participants could choose sessions from January and December that best met their schedules. Each workshop was tailored to provide the most up-to-date information on the test operations management system. Components of CASP and ALPAC and managing testing and reporting. We held question and answer sessions in January as a follow-up to the pre-test workshop information. About four thousand three hundred participants attended these pre-test workshops. In early January, we released a C D E assessment update webinar. The assessment update included updates and decisions since the December pre-test. It was also video recorded and released on January eleventh. Furthermore, E T S and C D E scheduled weekly office hours and coffee sessions to provide two-way communication. Between C D E and L E A staff, which I'll explain in more detail later. E T S continued to provide support and training at local regional assessment network meetings. The county offices of education, RAN members. Re- represent a subcommittee of the Curriculum and Instruction Steering Committee of the California County Superintendent. Set that Educational Services Association. The purpose of RAN is to develop knowledge and understanding about California's assessment and accountability systems. By facilitating communication between the California Department of Education. And county offices, which represent the schools, districts and county offices in the region. Next slide now? In response to input from stakeholders and LEAs, we launched a spring administration website specifically for educators. The site includes all admit spring administration information in a centrally located place and is geared specifically for educators. The site includes detailed browser and technology requirements, training videos, quick reference guides. Parent and guardian notification le- letters that we have made available in eight languages. And all of our question and answers from all office hours and coffee sessions. Next slide? In addition, we also developed a site for parents, guardians and students. This site includes, again, testing information flyer that's available in eight languages. Instructions for the secure browser, videos and quick reference guides in English and Spanish. And questions and answers that we've received from parents and um and guardians. This continues to be a work in progress. Over the coming meet weeks and months, we are committed to continuing to develop. Clear guidance and supports as it continues to be clear that parents, guardians and students have a strong desire to know and understand this year's academic progress. Next slide? Here you will see the link tree li- list of resources. Again, this is a very quick place to access any of the resources that we have available in the um multiple pages. Next slide? C D E supported E T, supported by E T S, launched weekly office hours and coffee sessions. The office hours were developed in response to the field's request for increased two-way communication. Every Thursday for the past month and a half, myself, Dr. Vane. And additional C D E and E T S staff provide updates, bring in guest speakers to share best practices and resources. And open up a live question and answer session for L E A staff to provide feedback and ask questions. Guest speakers included various LEAs that not only shared their learning ex- experience from the fall ALPAC administration. But freely shared their resources as well. Ed Trust West and California P T A provided suggestions and best practices in regards to mute communication with parents and community members. On average, each session engages about three hundred to three hundred particip- fifty participants. Next slide, please? In order to provide additional data to districts, the S V E approved the Lexile and Quantile Hub. To integrate through our test operations management system. Luxiles measure a student's reading levels and Quantiles measure a student's mathematical levels. Additionally, LEAs have access to free premium access resources for California. Additionally, LEAs have access to free premium access resources for California educators and have the opportunity to use the hub with locally available assessments and products that report Lexile and Quantile measures. I share all this information with you for a few reasons. First, I think it is vitally important to share with you, our state board, the commitment of our team at CDE to the field and the students of California. While I have only been in this position for nine months, I continue to be inspired by and grow in admiration for the large group of talented individuals that work quietly behind the scenes to serve our students under the vision, direction, and guidance of our state superintendent. Second, the support from our partners at Svac and ETS has allowed us to continue to explore innovative options to support the field and students in an unprecedented year. And finally, to express a deep sense of gratitude to the field for your partnership, your candor, and your perseverance. Everything that I shared is a collaboration of the effort of your feedback. With that, next slide now. Having explored the preparation for the spring assessment, we will now discuss the feedback we have received regarding spring assessments from stakeholders. Next slide. The CDE has received written correspondence from LEAs and stakeholder groups. The majority of feedback received reveals overwhelming support of submitting a waiver for relief of assessment requirements, citing varying degrees of student access to technology and the internet across the state, varying degrees of home testing environments for students, complying with the requirement that a secure browser must be used is difficult to implement. Some parents and guardians do not allow their children to have the camera on during the testing session. Next slide now. There's support for postponing for a fall administration, rather than canceling the summative assessments if it came to that. Concerns over extended testing window as well as testing in fall twenty twenty-one. Each option would further reduce time with students for extended learning. We've heard requests to submit for a waiver of assessment requirements, and we've heard concerns over the validity of assessment results. Next slide, please. We've also heard requests to more quickly make the data available, should we move forward with assessments. We've heard that assessment data are greatly needed to best meet the needs of students. And we've also heard that the majority of parents nationwide and locally support moving forward with assessments. Our local conversations and the summary of the feedback mirrors what we are hearing nationally as well. Next slide now. In December, CCSSO did a survey of states to get a sense of what their plans are for this spring. CCSSO heard back from thirty-nine states. They found that most states are planning to do some form of the state summative assessments. With that, states are exploring different approaches, including things like nineteen states reporting they plan to extend their testing window, eight states reporting they plan to shorten assessments. For those states that have students who are remote, about half of the states, twenty-three, intend to try to bring students to a school site to take the summative assessment. Next slide, please. For English learners and students with disabilities, that number is even higher, with thirty-one states indicating they will try to bring students to a school site for the assessment. A handful of states, five at least at this time, that were exploring the option of remote administration of the summative assessment. Most states that responded, at least twenty-nine, will be pursuing the addendum that we previously brought to the board that was offered by USED, seeking some relief from the accountability requirements. That was the addendum we had already brought to the board and approved, relieving us from the identification of CSI. As of February nineteenth, we believe that seven states have submitted a waiver to USED to waive assessment requirements. This was prior to the guidance being released on the twenty-second. Next slide. In order to provide flexibility in the midst of these unprecedented times, the CDE proposes the following flexibilities offered by the U.S. Department of Education. Now we're going to move into what was outlined within the guidance release from the U.S. Department of Education on Monday. The first flexibility is underneath the accountability and school identification and transparency of public reporting. We wanted to highlight here, because this has been a question repeatedly, that this pertains specifically to and includes the ninety-five percent participation requirement. The ED is offering a waiver to the accountability tie to the academic indicator, but not the requirement to assess ninety-five percent of the schools, students. In essence, the ninety-five percent participation requirement still stands, but there's no penalty if the ninety-five participation requirement is not met. We have also received in the letter that ED will follow up with an optional state accountability waiver template, similar to what you saw before, that would outline what we've discussed today as a way for us to check the box and submit back to ED of our intentions. Next slide. Additionally, we have flexibility to implement assessments, flexibilities for assessments. The first is administering a shortened version of the Smarter Balance Summit of Assessments for ELA and math. The second one is offering remote administration. And the third is considering to extend the CASP and LPAC test administration windows beyond the test windows as outlined in our current regulations. Next slide. At the November twenty twenty board meeting, the SBE approved the implementation of administering a shortened version of the Smarter Balance ELA and math assessments. We were ahead of the game. These shortened versions became available to LEAs on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Additionally, California has made remote administrations available to California LEAs for all CASP and LPAC assessments, which we were able to field test and learn from, as I shared previously, with the LPAC initial and the optional LPAC summative. Next slide, please. So that brings us to the two possibilities we would like to discuss today regarding the extension of the testing window. What we are exploring is first to extend the window to July thirtieth for CASP and LPAC. Our current regulations state that an LEA must administer the assessment by their last day of instruction or July fifteenth, whichever comes sooner. This would, in essence, allow every LEA to extend their window to July thirtieth. Or, not an and, or, the other potential possibility for extending the testing window would be to end the testing window per current assessment regulations, so by the last day of instruction or July fifteenth, whichever comes sooner, and add a new fall summative CASP and LPAC testing window. That could be made available roughly around August fifteenth through October twenty-ninth or October thirty-first. Next slide, please. We'd like to share some of what we're exploring as pros and cons to each of these options. Regarding the window to extend the window to July thirtieth, this offers additional opportunities for instruction through summer extended year and expanded learning for those students that participate. It provides flexibility for schools and additional time to communicate with families and stakeholders. There would be no delay for student-level results. It allows for more adults to be vaccinated, potentially increasing the opportunity for in-person assessments. And there's no added cost to extend the window from July to July thirtieth from twenty twenty-one. Next slide. Some of the cons or the consequences that we are exploring is, one, that the window extends beyond the traditional year. This is something that we've heard from many stakeholders, that schools may not be able to provide students with transportation and the infrastructure to support in-person assessments in the summer, especially if they are not attending extended year or expanded learning. We've heard often high levels of COVID fatigue, people are tired. And it would also provide a delay in the aggregated reporting to LEA state and federal levels. There is also potential impact on CalPads and LEA student information systems, although this would be minimal. For example, if an LEA typically ends their school year on July fifteenth, or June fifteenth, they would have to hold enrolling over their enrollment data to the next year until they have finished assessments. Their SIS would not be able to roll over their data until July thirtieth. Additionally, the same for CalPads, we would have to hold enrolling over our data until July thirtieth. And then, once that hits, then we could roll over our data, which potentially may delay our reporting of end-of-year data. Next slide. So some pros for adding a fall administration window. Again, this offers additional opportunities for instruction through summer extended year or expanded learning, the possibility to assess students afterwards if they partake of that opportunity. It provides flexibilities for schools, and again, additional time to communicate with families and stakeholders. It allows significantly more time for adults to be vaccinated, potentially increasing the opportunity, again, for in-person assessments. Next slide. Some of the cons for this or the consequences for this option. There would be a significant delay in aggregate reporting to LEA state and federal levels. We would not be able to close our CalPads information for fall until the assessment window is complete. It has an impact on CalPDA, LEA student information systems. One example of this is over the past few months, CDE has been working to update the post-process, which allows data to be pushed into the cloud at a much faster rate. This work would have to be postponed. Also, the standard CalPads data collections would be delayed, which includes course completion, enrollment, disciplinary incidents. It would delay our graduation report requirements, and then data used to calculate the adjusted cohort graduation rate. It would also impact enrollment counts, FRPM, special education, et cetera. Additionally, I just want to make it clear, as with many things this year, we would be attempting a fall assessment window at a very large scale, rather than, that has never been done before in California, with very little time to adjust. Not insurmountable, but it is a risk. As many of you know, CalPads is a dated system that has been stitched together over the course of a decade to meet our ever-evolving data needs, which is fantastic, and it needs an upgrade. This is uncertain, there is uncertainty about the impact that this may have on our system. There are lingering questions about tracking students that transition from a grade that would also include transitioning into another school. As an example, an eighth grader moving to ninth grade. They would, in essence, be moving from potentially their middle school into a high school. They would be tested as a ninth grader with an eighth grade assessment, but we would have to link back that eighth grade assessment to their previous school. Finally, it is important to note that LEAs would have to submit and update their student information systems with the most current data immediately in the fall to ensure CalPads information is correct for ETS to use and contrast from the previous year's data. Typically, LEAs have until December to certify their fall one data. This, again, not an insurmountable change, but it would require a lot of technical assistance for this process. And I think the final con to point out is that there would be an additional cost to add a new fall administration window. Roughly estimated, it would be about close to seventy-four million dollars. Next slide. Finally, I want to just note that while ED is allowing flexibilities and extending the assessment window, we have also heard from stakeholder groups and LEAs a desire to leave the window as it is. There is general expression among some to assess this year and move forward with a clean, fresh slate in the fall. And that brings us to the testing window extension survey of the LEA assessment coordinators that we recently conducted. In February, we asked LEA superintendents and testing coordinators to rank order their preference for testing window options, assuming we would need to move forward with assessments. The three testing window options included no changes to the current testing windows, extend both the CASP and the summative LPAC testing windows to July thirtieth, or provide an additional testing window in fall for both CASP and LPAC. We also asked what benchmark assessments that they had that could be administered to all students in the same grade level, not district-wide, but in the same grade level. Next slide. As of Friday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and I have to just say a thank you to the field, twelve hundred people submitted out of the two thousand unique LEAs, sixty-one percent in a two-day turnaround. So thank you for your participation and being willing to provide us with this extremely important feedback. For LEAs with multiple submissions, the responses from the LEA superintendent were included in the preliminary results. Next slide. This slide represents a summary of the rankings. Approximately thirty-three percent selected no change to the testing window as their first choice. Twenty-one percent selected the July thirtieth extension as their first choice, and forty-seven selected a fall administration as their first choice. If you look at the weighted average, so factoring in the combination of the first, second, and third choices, or the average rank, you will see pretty clearly that across the board, it was a pretty close vote. Next slide. Twenty-four of the twenty-five largest LEAs responded to the survey. The largest LEAs include eight of our core districts. The largest LEAs, as you can see, were evenly split in their preference of testing window options. Ten selected no change as their first choice, and ten selected the fall administration as their first choice. The core districts were also evenly split, with three selecting no change and three selecting the fall administration. One core district declined to rank their first choice. Next slide, please. Twelve hundred thirty-five LEAs indicated that they had at least one benchmark assessment that they could administer across grade levels to their students. The most frequently listed benchmark assessments available to the LEAs in order of the most mentions include five hundred and fifty-nine for STAR, three hundred and thirty-seven for I Ready, three hundred and four for NWEA, a hundred and seventy-three for DIBELS, and a hundred and thirty-one for Renaissance. Next slide, please. With that, I come to our recommendation. The California Department of Education requests the California State Board of Education to take action as deemed necessary and appropriate. And with that, I conclude my presentation and hand it back to you, President Darlene Hammond.
Thank you so much. I just want to start by thanking the staff of the Department of Education. This is such a highly professional, highly competent, highly committed team that has not only done all the work of preparing us as we normally do for assessments and for improvements in those assessments, but this extraordinary work of surveys, outreach to the field, outreach to the stakeholders, giving us as much information as we could possibly have to make good decisions in this moment. So just, we're deeply, deeply in your debt. We appreciate it very, very, very much. I want to note that there was a delay with posting the addendum earlier this morning. And so I want to just announce to the public that it has been posted on the SBE website. If you went to look for it earlier and didn't find it, it is there now. And at this point, we want to post the public comment slide once again, so that those who want to call in can get in a queue to offer their comments. We can take only clarifying questions from the board members if there are about specific things that you need to understand in order to take in the public comment. I want to be sure that we retain our discussion until after the public comment. But are there any clarifying questions from members of the board? I see Member Burr and Member Strauss with their hands up. Member Burr?
I just have two, yeah, thank you. I just have two clarifying questions. When we took action in November to shorten the Smarter Balance test, at my recollection is at my recollection is that only related to the English Language Arts and Mathematics. And we, did we take any action to shorten the science test? That's my first question. And then the second question, I think relates to something I believe Rachel talked about, which was test turnaround time, meaning when the results are available to LEAs. And if you could let me know what that test turnaround time is under a shortened administration construct, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So I'll answer your first question that you are correct. We, in the November meeting, we approved a adjusted blueprint for the ELA and math assessment. We explored the possibility of other assessments, but they were already much shorter than the ELA and math. That it, it didn't seem, one, that there would be a huge need to do that, and two, a question if we shortened it much more, how much that might compromise the validity and reliability. So we only did an adjusted blueprint for the ELA and math. As far as the turnaround for assessments, I, I would like to hand that over to our ETS contractor, Mary Ann. Mary Ann, would you be able to provide a little bit of information about how that a shortened test administration may impact the data coming back?
Good morning, President Darlene Hammond, Vice President Strauss, esteemed members of board, Deputy Superintendent Gregson. My name is Mary Ann Arcilla, Executive Director at ETS, the state's testing contractor. With regard to the question, one of the things that definitely we are, are very committed to is making sure that the assessments are fair and valid and reliable. And so we, we are, as part of the work that we're doing for the spring administration, is to conduct analysis with the data, especially the early data as they come in, to determine how well the assessments are measuring and how, how reliable, and especially as it pertains to remote administration versus in-person administration, where we can compare those. And, and that is information that we'll share with the CDE as well as with Smarter Balance and the Technical Advisory Group, so that we can vet through the data and then make recommendations as to the impact of the shortened form.
Thank you. I have a number of hands up going. I have neglected to ask our liaison, Ting Sun, if she would like to make any framing comments. Then I'll come back to the queue of clarifying questions. And I do want to just ask people to be mindful that we are asking clarifying questions at this point, so we don't delay getting to public comment too long. Member Sun.
Thank you, President Darlene Hammond. So I, yeah, and I want to wholeheartedly echo your words for the, for Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Maves and the work that Director Vong has done. The staff work has been amazing on this in a very short time and turnaround. And I also appreciate the context and background that, that you, President Darlene Hammond and Chief Deputy Gregson provided, to provide us a context for this conversation here. So, and, and of course, we've also received a number of public comments and letters, many of which are asking us not to administer assessments at all this, at all for this year because of the focus and need to focus their attention on the reopening of schools and re-engaging our students and getting our students physically back onto campuses, which I completely understand and absolutely support. And yet, I think it would be irresponsible of us as a state not to have an assessment. And certainly with the federal guidelines, you know, that's not necessarily a choice we will have. However, we do need to be, look at this purposefully. I mean, for one, we want to take the, we have to have assessments. You look at the example of a middle schooler who's in seventh grade right now. The last time we took pulse of where that student was academically at the state level was when that student was in fifth grade. So we've missed sixth grade, and if we don't, seventh grade, and then if we don't test until 2022, then the, the student would not be tested until eighth grade, which means that we've missed out on the entire school, entire middle school years for that student. So I think it is of utmost importance, and it would be irresponsible for us as a state not to provide, get some sort of an assessment of pulse and data on where our students are. So then that leads us to how purposeful we will be in looking at the administration. And for what purpose are we doing these assessments? And as Deputy Director Mao said, that we do assessments because we want to collect data on where our students are academically. And we want to do assessment for actionable change. So for me, that means that what we want to ensure the success, collecting data and, and using it for actionable change, then we need to look at the timing for the most success. And I do think that the most successes will be when we would have the majority of students back onto campus again. I know that, and, and for me, I was looking at the fall, and I know there's technical difficulty, difficulties and also a huge expense. But I will say, I'm also very encouraged by the number of reopening plans that we're seeing across the state. And if we are able to get a vast majority of our students back on campuses in the spring, then I think a spring administration would, might, may be feasible and ensure the success of both collection of data and to be able to, for us to assess actionable change. My biggest concern is for the students who have dropped out of our system during this time of distance learning. Our English language students, our immigrant students, our special education students, those are the ones who have suffered the most through this distance learning time. And for us to be able to collect data for actionable change for those students most at risk, we want to administer at a time where we can best collect the data from these students. And if they're not in the system for us to even test, then I don't think we'll be successful. So thank you for that time allowing my comments.
Thank you. I'm going to move now to Member Strauss, then Member Rodriguez and Member Navo, Member Glover Woods, and again, keep these two clarifying questions. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of clarifying questions. I have three. So the first is to be clear that if we were to go and recommend a fall administration, and the cost at $74 million, I, I just want to clarify, I believe that would take legislative and governor approval for budget allocation. I just want to clarify that. The second thing is, I believe that there's a, there's a recommendation that LPAC be done in person. I just want to clarify that recommendation for English learners to get the best valid results, because that would affect what we do with the testing window or whether we look at a second administration for them. So that's the, and then the third one is all the flexibilities, I believe that Mao and Rachel presented. Are there other flexibilities? I believe the federal guidance says that you can explore additional flexibilities based on the context of your state, and I think we're obviously a huge state, very diverse. Majority are still remote a year later. In contrast to smaller states that may have opened or don't have the kind of COVID spread that we've had. So just the clarification, the 74 million, the LPAC in person, and the additional flexibilities that federal governments allowing under their guidance.
I think those are all coming to you, Rachel and Mao.
Yep, we're ready. Thank you. So for the first one regarding the fall administration and the 74 million, and your question about approval from the state, and I apologize, I should have made that clear very, at the very beginning. What we are bringing forward to you today would relieve our federal requirements. It's not just the 74 million, it would be everything that we bring before you that would also have to be approved through a legislative vote or an executive order, because we also have our own state accountability and assessment requirements. So pending the board's decision here, whatever you vote to move forward and approve, it would waive the federal requirements, and then we would move forward with presenting this to the legislature or the governor's office, and then they would decide to either vote or provide an executive order to continue the, the decoupling. To the second question, the LPAC recommended in person, I think from the very beginning, we, we have been very clear on all the assessments. First and foremost, if you can safely, it, it should be done in person for all of the assessments. And if for some reason you're unable to do that, we've provided an additional option, and that stands for the LPAC in all assessments. The only one that we would say you absolutely cannot assess remotely is our alternate assessments, in part because the alternate assessments require within our regulations that only a test coordinator, be the, or a test administrator, be the one to provide support with the administration of the test that often requires manipulatives and other tools outside of just the assessment. Parents cannot do that at home. So that one is the only one we were unable to provide a flexible option for. To your third question, Eileen, regarding additional flexibilities, yes, the, the letter did outline, and the state board may direct the CDE and/or the Executive Director of the State Board to explore additional options as needed based on our state's context.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Let's see, Member Rodriguez, you are up next.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the amazing thorough presentation and all of the work that you've, the thoughtful work that you've put into this. So you answered one of my questions. Thank you, Member Strauss. And the other is, I teach at a high school, and so I was just wondering if, if we went with a fall assessment, would the, it's the 11th graders who take the CASP, 10th graders who take Science. Would it, would the seniors, this year's 11th graders, take the CASP? And would the, would they be juniors taking Science? If you could just clarify that.
Yeah, yes, that would be correct, and that would be correct for all students. As they come into their, the grade at which they are in in the fall, they would take the assessment for their previous grade.
All right. Then I guess we'll go to, is that, did, did you get everything answered that you wanted to, Member Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you so much.
Member Navo.
Just want to echo my fellow board members in commending the department on your preparation and the information you shared, Mao and Rachel. Very impressive, and thank you. Were the, you did the surveys with the field, and they had the choices that were in front of them. My question is, were they also shared the pros and cons of those potential choices? So did they understand that by asking for an extension of a fall, which seems to be much more complicated and much more expensive? Were they aware of that?
That's a great question, Member Navo. No, we did not outline that in the survey, the, what the repercussions of that potentially might be. We have shared in some of our stakeholder meetings, some of the pros and cons, but it was not outlined in the survey.
And it is, and it is extensive and complicated. I'm not sure you would have been able to give all of the detail adequately. Thank you. Member Glover Woods.
Good morning, and again, I echo comments from my fellow board members on just the extensive preparation for today's presentation, as well as all of the work that has been done to communicate and work with the field on this very important topic. My question for clarification is in relation to the impact on CalPads and the student information system. I just wanted to get clarification regarding the impact of extending the administration window or adding a fall administration. Is the impact to CalPads and student information the same?
So I, I am going to defer this question to Jerry Winkler, our Director for the Education Data Management Division, just to make sure that I, I don't miss something. Jerry, are you available to answer that question?
Yes, and thank you for that question. We believe that the impact to CalPads for the July extension would be far less than the impact for the fall administration, far less.
Yeah. If I could add a point of color, I think in one conversation we had with staff, there was a potential crash and burn metaphor that was put forward as a, as a fear for moving to the, to the, for the data system if we move to the fall. So I appreciate getting the data on, on that. Member Rodriguez, your hand is still up, but I'm assuming maybe it's just left up by mistake. Okay, great. I have just one more clarifying question before we move to a public comment. And I think that what we may want to do, by the way, is just take a five-minute bio break for getting a cup of coffee and getting back before we hear public comments, so we don't have to disrupt the commenting. But I did want to ask about the possibilities as we're looking at all the ways in which we can make testing more feasible, shorten the extent of the assessments, et cetera. I understand from the folks at the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium that there is consideration being given to allowing a way to move performance tasks out of the very long sit-down test into classroom administration. And I just want to ask whether that's a possible option we might be able to provide to school districts that were interested in that way of managing the assessments.
I, I thank you for that question, Linda. I'll hand that over and invite Tony Alpert, the Executive Director of the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, to provide you an answer to that question. Tony, would you like to join?
Hi, Tony. Hello. And for the record, my name is Tony Alpert, Executive Director for Smarter Balance. Thank you, President Darlene Hammond, for the question. Yes, we are interested in investigating that option and looking for opportunities to, for innovation and to collaborate with the Department of Education and with the State Board on how to make the logistics of the assessment easier and, and opportunities to find ways to enhance the validity.
Thank you. I also just want to note, since we have you on the camera for a moment, how much we appreciate the ways in which the Smarter Balance Consortium has been so responsive to looking at ways to shorten the test, to find remote testing options where they can work, and, you know, to helping everyone both do the best job we can and to do it in the most efficient way possible. So lots of work has gone on there as well. We appreciate it.
Darlene Hammond, could I just really quickly go back to Member Navo's question regarding whether or not districts or LEAs understood the, the different impacts of the options? We didn't provide it with the summary, but I did also, and I didn't want to fail to note this. We were able to meet with about 10 districts and their assessment coordinators, CalPads coordinators, and representatives from the curriculum and instruction side of the house last Friday, and went over all of these with them as well, and they provided pretty significant and, I think, helpful feedback for the discussion today. So I just wanted to acknowledge the feedback that they provided and the time that they were able to spend with us and sharing some of their thoughts as well.
Terrific. Thank you. Lots of people in the boat rowing together to try to get to solutions to these knotty problems, and we really do appreciate it. I want to give us a five-minute bio break because we're going to have quite extensive public comment, I believe. So it is 10:01, and at 10:06, if you could try to be back, grab a cup of coffee and be comfortable, we'll see you then. Turn off your video and microphone, but do not leave the room. All right? Thank you. Welcome back. Welcome back. Thank you for the break. Yeah, I know. I think we were all feeling a momentary need. I don't want to miss any of the public comments, so we will be able to, hopefully, all be there for all of that. If you do need to take a break later, just send a note in the chat that you're going to be right back, you know, and turn off your camera and microphone if you need a couple of minutes for any kind of a break. But we're going to try to forge ahead now. We're scheduled to try to complete by noon. I'm going to ask Brooks to please call the roll and reestablish the quorum.
Okay. Member Burr.
Here.
President Darling Hammond.
Here.
Member Pata.
Here.
Member Glover Woods.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Navo.
Here.
Member Patil Brownson.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Rucker. Vice President Strauss.
Here.
Member Sun.
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, I think we are going to open the phone line for public comment. Are there any public comments?
Yes, we do have currently 40 people in public comment. Callers, good morning. This is for item number two. First caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. I'm Deb Cuban, Superintendent for Ukiah Unified School District located in rural Northern California. I'm excited to share that Ukiah Unified just reopened to in-person instruction last week for preschool through grade 12 after 11 long months of distance learning. Instructional minutes in-person with students are coveted and limited. It has been challenging to keep students connected with school and excited about learning during distance learning. Now that we are seeing students back on campus, we must preserve our in-person time with them to help reengage them with school and with each other. Time spent assessing students beyond a district's interim assessments will only add to the learning loss they have experienced and the social-emotional toll this pandemic has taken. We must prioritize our in-person time with our students to address their needs. Statewide testing will take many hours of instruction away from our students who have already lost so much during this pandemic. I respectfully urge the State Board of Education to pursue a blanket waiver for standardized testing for the 2021 school year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Struck, and I am the Data and Assessment Coordinator for the Mellow Park City School District. I would like to advocate that California pursues a waiver to suspend state testing for the 2020-2021 school year. We have a solid benchmark assessment system in place at every grade level, and we've been administering them each trimester to identify student instructional needs, plan instruction and intervention, as well as report out to our community the impact that the pandemic and distance hybrid instruction has had on student learning. Our schools have been open with in-person hybrid instruction since September, with in-person instruction every other week and at-home asynchronous learning the alternating weeks. While we value the data provided by state assessments, we are very aware of the limited and precious in-person instructional time we have with our students. We're concerned about the amount of time and energy to both prepare teachers and students, as well as administer the CASP assessments this spring.
Time.
Students.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, Board President, Dr. Am I live?
Yes, you're live. I apologize. Please go ahead.
So sorry. Good morning, Board President, Dr. Darling Hammond, Board Members and Superintendent Thurman. My name is Dr. Gina Potter, and I'm the Superintendent for the San Ysidro School District and the Chair of Access Legislative Policy Committee. I respectfully urge the State Board to pursue a blanket waiver for standardized tests. Given the vast majority of schools in California are providing distance learning, there are significant challenges with online standardized testing, such as lack of equitable student access to the internet and computers, lack of home technology support to students, lack of in-person teacher supervision to proctor the exam, and issues with the academic integrity of the exam. As an educational leader, I support the importance of standardized assessments. However, the pandemic has caused significant trauma for students, families, and staff. Testing during this crisis will exacerbate the fragile balance. California is seeking to prioritize the safe reopening of schools. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond and members. Eric Premack, on behalf of Charter Schools Development Center and our hundreds of charter school members. We're generally supportive of granting flexibility here, and we appreciate the efforts of CDE staff and the contractors to address the many logistical and practical issues. But we're also deeply concerned about the lack of information or even discussion as to the impact of these changes on the high-stakes new renewal laws that govern charter schools. We believe that these issues need to be addressed concurrently and immediately, not only with respect to the CASP test, but also with regard to the list of 11-odd alternative assessments that you approved earlier this year, as well as the impact on any delay in implementation of the federal intervention laws on charter renewal. And we hope that you will address all of those so that we can all avoid a tidal wave of hotly contested appeals coming your way. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond and members of the board. My name is Dave Dubrovsky, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services in Harupa Unified School District in Riverside County. I'm calling to urge you to continue forward in the process of pursuing a waiver for standardized testing requirements for this year. We remain in purple tier today, and in my district, like most others in my county, we're engaged in remote instruction. The administration of the testing is problematic and will only serve to exacerbate the inequities highlighted during the pandemic. Our students come from a wide variety of backgrounds, and many will experience a difficult, at best, testing environment. And as such, the data we receive is going to be inaccurate. Our focus really needs to be on diagnostic and formative assessments that will serve our teachers in determining the best path forward for student success as we move towards reopening schools, not on a remotely administered, high-stakes test that will take instructional time and focus away from the important work ahead, regardless of whether that happens in spring, summer, or fall. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Yes, good morning, President Darling Hammond and fellow board members. My name is Rico Tumayo, and I'm President of the Early Childhood TK-12 Council for CST. And I'm here representing 85,000 CST members. Now that the U.S. Department of Ed's released a letter allowing waivers and flexibilities, we ask that you consider submitting a wide waiver to allow our focus to be on safe schools and much-needed mental and emotional health for our students. At this time, summative assessments will not provide any useful information from our students, especially when schools are dealing with different rates of COVID. And we're seeing high COVID rates correlated with the same economic and social disadvantages that our tests always show. We do recommend, however, that you allow LEAs to be able to utilize local assessments instead of state summative assessments. And furthermore, we ask the board to obtain a waiver for the 2021 school year and not extend testing to the fall. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello, good morning. My name is Darrell Camp, and I'm the Superintendent of the San Lorenzo Unified School District. On behalf of our board, I share with you a resolution that was passed last Saturday opposing state standardized testing for the 2021 school year. And we request a blanket waiver that pertains to all statewide testing. The reasons are simple for us. We, when we did our assessment, the cons of testing far outweigh the pros of testing. Once again, the board had a lot of questions about the utility and the validity associated with testing and had extreme concerns about the anxiety that's placed on our students and staff during this COVID-19 time. Once again, we thank you for your time and effort. And thank you again, President Darling Hammond and members of the State Board of Education, Superintendent Thurman. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live. Can you hear me? Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond and board members. My name is Enrique Roger, and I'm representing the San Diego Unified School District. And I would just, I'm calling to ask for a waiver to suspend testing for the 2021 school year for all assessments. And that would include the Summit of LPAC. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, Board of Education. My name is Mercedes Levian. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Educational Support Services for Oceanside Unified School District. We serve over 16,500 students, including military-connected students. We urge you to focus on a blanket waiver for standardized testing. We are eager to return to in-person instruction, and we'll be doing so on the 15th of March. Due to the California Department of Public Health Guidance for Physical Distancing, our students will have limited time with their teachers, and we would want that time to be focused on building their connections and addressing the trauma that they've already experienced during this pandemic, rather than on standardized testing. We have a robust local assessment system that we will continue to use and monitor so that we can provide targeted services for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Katie Summer, Assistant Superintendent for Ukiah Unified School District. In our rural areas, we struggle with technology issues that will extend the time CASP assessments will take and will deem many of the results unusable due to time limit requirements. These challenges include internet access, as many of our students have hotspots that are not always stable in rural areas. In addition, the new system requirements for CASP have made many of our Chromebooks unusable for these assessments. This, too, creates logistical challenges that will extend the time it is going to take for the CASP assessments. The training of staff to be able to give the assessments in-person and remotely will take up precious time instead of focusing on improving instruction and reopening secondary schools. It will also take additional instructional time to train students on the platform, especially for students who will be taking it remotely. We only have 12 weeks left of school to focus on instruction, and we have our own district-wide interim assessments in ELA and Math that can be used to address unfinished learning. Thus, I respectfully urge the State Board of Education to pursue a blanket waiver for standardized testing. Thank you for your time.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, State Board members. My name is Marcos Aguilar. My name is Marcos Aguilar, and I'm a member of the Indigenous Resurgence Education Network across the country and here locally in the co-head of school at Anavacameca World School, the county of Los Angeles' only community-based Indigenous Peoples K-12 school. I urge that the State Board of Education Superintendent of Instruction in California pursue a blanket waiver of all federal mandates for student testing in 2021, as well as the waiving of additional state mandates. Our students, staff, and parents have maintained a committed and disciplined approach to living through this pandemic and maintaining a strong learning community through online platforms that we've had, through great difficulty negotiated and presented with our community. But adding state testing does not help us get back to school. Irreconcilable problems abound with high-stakes standardized testing in general, particularly regarding validity, reliability, fairness, and bias, and with the way these tools are used against schools like ours as a charter school. These and other inequities have been exacerbated during the pandemic. The state should determine instead how historic rates of high, of high rates of child hunger, housing insecurity, and a lack of access.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello?
Yes, caller. You may proceed.
Hello?
Yes, caller. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, board members. I'm Carlos Machado with the California School Boards Association. CSBA supports seeking a waiver of standardized testing requirements this year. We appreciate the department's outreach efforts to stakeholders to identify modifications in an effort to address concerns outlined in the presentation. However, the waiver represents the best option to help reduce the significant burdens that the assessments will place on students, their families, and on teachers as districts and schools focus on reopening and accelerating learning opportunities. For this reason, we ask the board to pursue the blanket waiver option afforded by the Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, Dr. Darling Hammond and board members. I am representing the Association of Catholic School Administrators. Respectfully requesting the state board to education pursue a blanket waiver for standardized testing. Even without statewide assessments, our districts can and will use other tools that are available to gauge student learning and needs. We believe that it paramount that we prioritize students right now and use this valuable time to accelerate learning and support students and staff's social, emotional, and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm Viviana Mastin, California Policy Analyst at Unidos US, previously known as the National Council of La Raza, where the nation's largest Latino civil rights and advocacy organization. And we strongly believe that administering annual assessments for the 2020-2021 academic year, ideally in spring, is critical to have a more accurate read on where Latino and English learners students stand on their path to success. And in light of the U.S. Department of Education Dear Colleague Leader on Assessments, who recently released, we recommend that the board, one, provide LEAs the necessary flexibilities either to safely administer annual assessments; two, ensure appropriate accommodations are offered for students with disabilities and English learners as required under federal law for statewide assessments; three, exercise transparency in reporting data on student learning for parents, educators, and the public; and lastly, use assessments to inform systemic decisions from an equity lens, including how the state will charge your resources and make investments to support students at the greatest need. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello, good morning, State Board and community that are online today. My name is Tracy Noriega, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, serving the students of San Lorenzo Unified School District with Superintendent Dr. Darrell Camp, who spoke earlier. We are in Alameda County, which is still in the purple tier, and our district is still in distance learning. Last Saturday, February 21st, our amazing board trustees passed Resolution Number 3682 opposing state standardized testing. I pulled out two lines to read for all of you. Whereas the process of remote testing from student homes will most likely increase the current heightened levels of anxiety that both students and parents and guardians will have to experience. Whereas SLZ USC is committed to supporting the social, emotional well-being of our students and believes actions need to be taken to mitigate any negative impact of state testing. With that, we are requesting the state pass a blanket waiver for standardized tests. I hope as a state, we can be committed to supporting our students' social, emotional well-being as well. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hicks, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services at Foster County Office of Education and the 2021 SIS chair. I'm sharing these comments on behalf of SIS and SESSA. While we're thankful that the recent letter from the U.S. Department of Ed provides waiver options for accountability, this does not provide the relief that schools and parents need. The flexibilities offered for consideration are limiting and will negatively The flexibilities offered for consideration are limiting and will negatively impact critical, valuable instructional and learning time, whether it's this spring or later in the fall. The data we will receive will not be useful nor timely to inform learning acceleration plans. Instead, local formative assessment plans are far more critical in terms of quickly assessing student progress, identifying needs, and addressing inequities. We ask that the Board first request an accountability waiver and second actively explore and pursue the maximum additional flexibilities, including a blanket waiver based on our state-specific circumstances and individual needs. We would welcome the opportunity to be part of this conversation about what this might look like. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Stacy Stansbury. Good morning. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for the Taff Union High School District. I would like the Board to consider the detriment versus benefit for our students' perspective as we, and apply for the blanket waiver for standardized tests. Our students test once in high school and these test scores will follow them to college. This year, we're asking the students to test in a different environment and many will need to test remotely due to pandemic health concerns and our county being in deep purple tier. This means that some of our students will be trying to use hotspots in rural areas or find a quiet location in a home with young siblings and family interruptions outside of anyone's control. This, along with the intimidation of being on camera while testing and having to work through technical issues remotely, is less than an ideal setting for our students to accurately show us what they have learned. This standardized test will not be standardized due to the numerous variables during testing. Testing data and trend comparisons from this year will not be accurate or usable by the school or state. While our students have been resilient, flexible, and flexible, please consider the mental health and stress the students have during testing and what they have been through this year, testing in this way.
Time.
Or when we first returned to school in the fall is not in the best interest of our students and is one more thing that they will have to endure this year.
Next caller.
Thank you for your time.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Bill Lucia of Edvoice. Edvoice supports moving forward with the uniformed statewide shortened assessments with extra testing time, extended testing window to July or August at the latest, and flexibility on participation rates so focus can be on logistics and turning around results as soon as possible. Waiting to the fall means getting results late fall or winter. Such a delay from time of instruction is inconsistent with generally accepted assessment practice and delays needed extra help for students. With an eye on equity of opportunity, it's important to have comparable data on learning loss and achievement gaps amplified by the pandemic as seen as practicable. This data is needed to best invest in students with accelerated learning opportunities this summer and immediately in the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Michael Jubah, speaking on behalf of the California Teachers Association. CTA believes that the SBE should look back at the last time the US DOE provided guidance on assessment waivers that did not make sense for California. In 2013, Dr. Kirst, Superintendent Torleksen, and Governor Brown pushed back on the US DOE and ultimately made the right decision for the students, parents, and educators of California. Over forty-six thousand teachers have signed our petition to waive state tests. And CTA believes that the concerns outlined in our letter regarding the feasibility of administration, the usability of the data, and the cruelty of putting our students, families, and educators through a high-stakes summative assessment make the choice clear and appropriate. In closing, the SBE should aggressively pursue a blanket assessment waiver for the 2020, 2021 school year. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Jeff Frost. I'm representing the Long Beach Unified School District, San Jose Unified School District, the Central Valley Education Coalition, and all of the superintendents in, uh, Orange County. Um, I am contacting you regarding, uh, the blanket waiver and to urge you, uh, to consider that as the most reasonable option, given the level of stress, um, and lack of accommodations for special ed and EL students in a remote environment for testing. Thank you very much.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Joanna French, and I'm Senior Manager of Research and Policy at Innovate Public Schools. We work with over a thousand parents statewide who are low-income parents of color, parents of English learners, and parents of students with special needs. The most important thing we can do for our students right now is to understand student progress and the extent of learning loss so we can target resources to those students who need them most. We believe we need spring assessments in order to do this, even if the window is extended to July thirtieth. Given the survey presented this morning, um, that showed LEAs across the state are split evenly in ranking the three options, and the EdTrust West poll that fifty-five percent of parents are in favor of resuming assessments this spring, we recommend the State Board of Education vote to move forward with the spring assessments rather than waiting. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Please, next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darlene Hammond and members of the State Board. My name is Holly Eads and I'm the Superintendent of the Orchid Union School District, which is located in Santa Barbara County. I'm calling you today to urge the State Board to pursue a blanket assessment waiver for standardized tests from the US Department of Education for this school year. The social-emotional effect of the pandemic is devastating for a number of our students. We remain concerned that requiring them to perform on a standardized test will place unnecessary stress on students when our primary concern is for their safety, including their mental health. As a district, we rely heavily on data to guide our instruction and to inform our practice. Data is only as good as its validity and reliability, neither of which can be assured when you have students participating in a variety of settings and variables we cannot control. The fact is, students in distance learning will not have the same level of support as students that are in person. We have local measures we continue to rely on to monitor student performance. Many of these are criterion and norm-referenced assessments such as NWEA, Acadiance, or DIBELS, and, and the PISA. Thank you for your time in doing what's right for the six-point-three million students in California.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, uh, President Darlene Hammond and Board members. This is Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. Um, if the CASP spring administration is waived, the federal waiver request itself should condition the waiver on LEAs administering a diagnostic assessment of some kind in the spring. This has to provide information about students' learning, their status, and needs. These assessments should be publicly available by site and LEA, and they should be actionable for decisions about services and resource allocations for extended learning in the summer and for the LCAS for 2021 and 22. LEAs should also be required to use their local data to identify particular student groups whose needs they should focus on in extended learning and LCAS. For example, kindergarten and first-grade students who did not enroll in TK or kindergarten for 2020 and 21, students who either received Ds or Fs, or incompletes, or no past grades.
Time, thank you caller.
Lastly, oh, right, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live. Can you hear me?
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Jordan, Superintendent of Malpitas Unified, representing the Santa Clara County Superintendents Association. Santa Clara County has persistently been in the purple tier for COVID-19, and currently only fifteen percent of our districts have some grade levels on campus for in-person learning. While the majority of our districts are providing in-person learning support, it is not enough to assure equitable access to testing conditions for students. The CDE team has worked diligently to provide a shortened testing system with suggestions for in-person and online testing. The requirement for students to have cameras on with speakers is one example for equitable testing environments. However, we have parents who will not allow their children to be watched by a camera and will opt out. In California, there's a backlog of digital devices on order that have needed requirements for the secure testing browser. MUSD is one example. We have had twenty-five hundred Chromebooks on order since the fall and only have received one-hundred-and-fifty-eight. We urge you to request a blanket waiver for standardized testing in California.
Time.
The investment of time and resources is better spent redesigning our education system.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. Sarah Baches with the California Association of Schools, uh, Association of School Business Officials. We request that the State Board and CDE pursue the waiver for the required administration of the state standardized testing for the 2020, 21 school year. Our organization is committed to supporting our students and staff, and so we're eager to bring them back and focus on what we need to do to ensure their safety. And as we continue to navigate the merit of considerations and decisions that go into this work, we must reiterate the importance of prioritizing instructional time. Thank you so much.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Brian Hopps, Director of Instructional Support, representing Rural and Unified School District. I respectfully urge a blanket waiver for standardized testing this year. The CDE says the purpose of CASP is to promote high-quality teaching and learning through the use of a variety of assessment approaches. Test administration in this environment will face uneven application. The data will not be reliable and our stakeholders will not trust the data. Without trust, what is the purpose of this data? The earlier presentation said it would be irresponsible to not test at this time because we need a state-level pulse on students. This assumes LEAs are not already collecting and using local, formative, actionable data. We continue to use local benchmarks and formative assessments to guide instruction, form summer learning opportunities, and provide small group intervention. A state standardized assessment with, with significant challenges to validity or reliability would not provide this kind of information to LEAs and parents.
Time.
Much less an accurate statewide snapshot of student progress.
Thank you caller.
We request the CDE to allow us to focus on what is most important.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Robert Manwaring from Children Now. Uh, we co-authored with colleagues in the equity community, the school reform community, parent groups, and business groups, a letter that would oppose a blanket waiver. Um, we believe that now is an important time, especially given the lack of testing last spring, for parents to know how their students are doing relative to other students in the state. While many districts do, uh, administer other interim assessments, those results are rarely shared with parents to inform them about their child's progress, especially relative to the state standard benchmarks. Uh, in terms of the options in front of you, we would prefer either option one or two, administering the test either this spring or through an extended window rather than the fall, um, and would support the accountability waiver as well as the waiver of the ninety-five percent tests. Um, finally, we would suggest that there really is a strong need for a communication plans with parents, especially if assessments are going to be administered in a distance learning setting.
Time.
So that they can be, uh, supportive of their children as they take these assessments. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Ann Rungy, and I'm an employee of San Diego Unified School District. Having administered the initial and optional summative LPAC last fall and being required to prep and train to administer the operational field test for the alternate, the collusion of these three assessments was overwhelming and should be looked at as lessons learned. I would like it noted that many of our sites are currently administering the summative LPAC, and a waiver is unfair at this point for that LPAC. Looking forward to this year, I'm completely opposed to the extending testing window for this year. With the postponement of the operational field test until this fall and the initial, it will only cause a collision of testing during the fall season, which will create undue stress for both staff and students. The extension into summer will create hardships on school districts to have children present themselves in person. Therefore, I implore this Board not to vote for an extension of the summative LPAC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darlene Hammond and members of the Board. Angelina Gutierrez, representing the LA County Office of Education. I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues and respectfully urge the Board and CDE to pursue a blanket waiver for the required administration of the state standardized test for the 2020, 21 school year. The statewide assessment is not necessary in our current climate to properly measure the progress of our, of our students have made this year, and the data to be collected from any assessments will be unreliable in comparison to other testing years. We strongly support and need flexibility to allow our LEAs the discretion in selecting and administering local assessments they need to reliably evaluate student learning progress, needs, and gaps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. Kristen Power with the Alliance for Children's Rights. Wanted to be sure that the Board and the California Department of Education clarify to local education agencies and the public that any waiver of state assessment does not include assessments administered to students for the purposes of determining what, if any, services and supports are needed to provide the child with a free, appropriate public education. In other words, individual education program IEP assessments required under the IDEA. These IEP assessments should cover all areas related to a student's suspected need or disability, and we would encourage the Board and Department of Education to clarify that this waiver, if enacted, does not include those assessments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Lorraine Richards, speaking as a parent. Good morning. I'm a parent asking for testing to not continue remotely. I decided to ask my eighth-grade son last night, what do you think about doing state testing at home? He quickly came back with an odd expression, expression to accompany, "Home is not an environment for instruction," and now testing? The test will be used for potential placement in next year's classes? That's not fair. It is stressful. Interruptions that cannot be controlled, like my dog barking, the kids playing outside next door, and my sister in the kitchen? I, the parent, feel that there is limited time for instruction. I support the current instruction that is currently going on and how the time is being utilized. Teachers are using real-time assessment to monitor progress. The preparation and setup for online-at-home testing would truly be a waste of time. The valuable time for instruction would be robbed from students for the sake of adhering to the federal government's requirements. The bottom line, not time for testing for the home. California is better than this when it comes to students coming first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Angela Geralmos. I'm, um, speaking as an individual, and I'm speaking on behalf of my, um, fifth-grade students, because I'm a fifth-grade teacher. Um, as an educator, there's so many other assessments that would be useful and relevant. Um, the data from this is going to be useless. It's the conditions, um, I can already anticipate my kids are going to have struggle getting on, um, logging in and navigating, um, but the, the data is not going to help me as an educator at all. And moreover, even in regular times, testing is sort of, uh, um, anxiety-inducing for the kids. So I kind of consider it a torture for my students, and I really hope that we can do whatever we can to mitigate, um, the, the impact on students. They, they're not going to feel great about doing this test, and, um, if we're really looking out for our kids, we'll do everything we can to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead caller.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Christina Valentine, Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment and LEA Test Coordinator in Sunnyvale School District located in the Bear area. Thank you, Board, for your ability to be warm demanders as defined, defined by Zaretta Hammond. On behalf of the students in Sunnyvale, I encourage you to pursue a blanket assessment waiver for standardized tests. During the During the pandemic, we have been laser-focused on ensuring that our students have continued to learn and grow socially, emotionally, physically, and academically. We have robust, solid, and reliable local measures to measure student academic progress and have been utilizing these diagnostic tools in order to create recovery plans for our students in collaboration with our parents. We are currently preparing for a hybrid reopening as county infection rates drop. This spring, we would value using the time for instruction rather than administering the state assessments. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our assessments do not measure how our students have grown in resilience, maturity, and capacity for empathy and self-care during the pandemic. Thank you for your consideration and thoughtful decision-making that positively impacts the students of California.
Thank you caller. Next caller.
Thank you.
Please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Lee, good morning, President Darling Hammond and members of the State Board. This is Lee Angela Reed, on behalf of Dr. Mary Ann Dewan, the County Superintendent of Schools of Santa Clara County. Superintendent Dewan appreciates the board's discussion of this item and the efforts from the federal government to provide some guidance and flexibility. However, she would ask that we continue to press forward for as much flexibility as possible for our districts and schools and to ask the board to continue advocating for a blanket waiver from the Federal Department of Ed. Thank you, Ann, thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Stacy Slicka. I'm a LAUSD parent and stakeholder in public education. I'm calling to ask the board to apply for a blanket assessment waiver for California at this time. I'm a little bit concerned because there seems to be someone missing in this dialogue, which is the 6.3 million voices, the children. The choices on your survey did not give the option for a blanket waiver. Therefore, you had such an equal split within the LEI in asking what they would rather choose for the state assessment. And also to look at the local level, the local interim testing has been very robust, especially in the LAUSD school system, and children have been tested more now than ever before. Let's think of our children, the children's mental health. They should be first and foremost on this and not be discussing the time and the money as parents and stakeholders.
Time.
That it would cost to do something that would only increase the anxiety and stress on these children.
Thank you caller.
That have had to deal with this pandemic for the last.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you caller.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Kevin Chomar. I'm calling you on behalf of the Compton Unified School District as well as the California Association of Black School Educators. I'd like to urge the State Board to embrace a blanket waiver for standardized testing the 2021 school year. We believe that due to the learning conditions as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, conducting standardized state tests will simply not be fair to students, nor will they provide any meaningful data associated with student achievement outcomes. We believe that any test administered under current circumstances will have little, if any, validity, and we believe that the student's time would be better served by continuing to focus on learning and not anxiety-inducing assessments. We're concerned about the impact on equity and student mental health. I look forward to pursuing a robust testing regime when students are safely back in the classroom and can focus on learning next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Mary Terry from the California State PTA, and we believe that testing provides important information, and parents need to understand how their children's academic status compares to others in the state. That said, the concerns about testing this spring are valid as well. For that reason, we believe that the postponement of testing and/or the extension of the testing window until the vast majority of students are back in school is the appropriate middle ground, perhaps with further adjustments to testing format, if that's a reasonable alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Madam President and members, this is Brian Rivas, calling in on behalf of the Education Trust West. Our view of federal guidance on this matter is that blanket waivers will not be granted. And the reason for that is the federal government has indicated we need to be able to see the full impact of the pandemic, and we agree with that. We think we need data to guide the recovery, and the recovery will be more effective for low-income students and students of color if we have data that can guide the allocation of resources. We are asking that you proceed with the current testing window because we think the results should be available as soon as possible. And I also want to lift up that in our polling of parents, parents have repeatedly indicated they want to know, "How is my son or daughter doing, and should I be advocating for expanded learning opportunities?" We also think it's important to provide testing for those purposes.
Time.
And we agree with the desire to seek a waiver from accountability.
Thank you caller.
We think that's appropriate in the current circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, State Board of Education. My name is Stephanie Gambrell, and I'm the Assessment Coordinator for Alder Grove Charter School in Eureka, California. I implore you to put through a blanket waiver for statewide assessments, or at the very least provide flexibility when it comes to accountability. If you've heard, as you've heard from the majority of the school and district leaders who've called in today, the survey had included choice for a waiver. I have no doubt this would have been an overwhelming preference. Furthermore, the requirement that alternate assessments be administered in person unfairly targets students who are often more at risk for health complications than other students. In our small LEA, where we'll be continuing distance learning until the fall, the two students that are to take the alternate assessments are both highly compromised and will be opting out if required to assess this year. The impact this will have on our participation rate is devastating and places an unreasonable amount of pressure on our small school, not to mention the stress this will have on students during an already challenging year. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. Marsha Zaragoza Diaz, representing the California Association for Bilingual Education and Californians Together. We believe the option extending the window to July 30th for the CASP is the best option at this time in light of the situation that we're all in. However, we are requesting the board to extend the LPAC window to the fall. The LPAC is different from the CASP in that it is given in all grades, younger children are tested, where a larger percentage of our EL students are enrolled, and an oral component of the test is included. Many EL students minimally participated or didn't participate in distance learning, affecting the numbers of tested. Additionally, there were significant problems of connectivity and the lack of secure browsers. By extending the LPAC window to the fall, we believe larger numbers of EL students will be given the LPAC, and LEAs, I mean LEAs, will be better prepared to administer the LPAC. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello?
Yes, please proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed with your comment.
My name is Susan Missman, with Speak Up United Parents, with over 4,000 parent members in Los Angeles. We strongly support collecting data for actionable change, which I believe one of your board members talked about recently. And that response is needed sooner than later to begin to recover effectively and address learning loss and closing the widened gap, more like a continental divide right now, which continues to grow. We are California. We can do this. Hybrid in-class remotely, emphasizing we support a waiver on the accountability element. Assessments should be used at this point in time are critical for our parents and our communities to understand what tools are needed for student progress and how to best target resources and programs who need it now, not tied to accountability, but for the purposes of recovering. And waiting until fall is far too long. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, are you available? Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, are you there?
Hi, this is Samuel.
Yes, please go ahead and state your comment.
Good day. My name is Samuel Arias. I am a 10-year-old student. I am here today to speak on behalf of the Special Education Children. Please do not allow any waivers to assessments. As it is special needs children are getting deferred to service through distant learning. Today, I asked out the California State Board of Education Project Special Education Children Needs. An effort to a vote for special education children. My family and I created the YouTube movement. Every student successful. More education, less litigation. Special education children matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Minnie Ferguson. I am a member of the Indigenous Resurgence Education Network and co-head of Anava Kalme Kuk World School, the only indigenous state school K-12 in Los Angeles. I urge the State Board of Education Superintendent to pursue a blanket waiver of all federal mandates for students testing in 2021, as well as a waiver of additional state mandates due to the impact of the pandemic. Our school is located in what became a national epicenter of the latest surge in the pandemic. The state should also determine how historical rates of child hunger, housing insecurity, and a lack of access to healthcare have impacted children and students in the most fundamental ways. We have actively assessed our students internally and have ways of knowing how our students are doing and have worked with our families immensely to be able to give them feedback throughout the year so that they are involved and they're able to work with us on addressing the needs and areas of growth. We feel all professionals are capable of doing this.
Time.
All schools are capable of doing this, and the state of California can continue with its training.
Thank you caller.
And all the tools that it's been providing us to start administering the IABs, which could be a way in which teachers can use them in the classrooms and greatly support students.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Okay, that caller dropped. Last caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Maria Arias. I am a parent of three special needs children. I would like today to speak on behalf of the Special Education Children and Community. Please do not vote or allow any waivers to come into effect. As it is, our special needs community and children have been hurt through distance learning, many not receiving services as is detailed in their IEPs. Today, I ask for the California State Board of Education to please protect special needs children and protect their rights, their faith. In an effort to advocate for special needs children, our family created a YouTube movement. Every student successful. More education, less litigation. A special education children matter. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today. Have a great day.
Thank you caller. This concludes public comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really very much appreciate the testimony today, and we know that this is a difficult issue, an emotional issue. These are difficult circumstances, and we have less than perfect choices. And that supporting schools and caring for students and our staff and supporting learning has to be our most important priority. Clearly, we need to value the time for learning, reduce and prioritize the time that's needed for assessment so that results can be useful. And where traditional summative assessments cannot be administered safely and reasonably, we'll need to identify other ways that student learning and progress data can be provided to students and parents and educators. We are going to open the table for discussion among board members, and I see that Member Rucker has a hand raised. If others would please identify yourself if you want to speak, I will keep track.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I hope you can hear me?
We can.
I want to first begin by thanking the public and the diversity of stakeholders who called in. In all of my time on the State Board, I have been impressed, informed, and influenced by your assertions and the statements and advice you have offered to the board. I'm so thankful that you take the steps that are required for you to participate in this virtual meeting, to be engaged as you have been today. There's so much to discuss about this item and the action we're asked to contemplate. So knowing that we at some point will move to considering a motion, I do want to ask my colleagues on the board to consider dividing or splitting the recommendations into more than one motion. I held the questions that I wanted to ask about some of the recommendations because I wanted to hear the feedback from the public comment and be informed by that. But so I wanted to be able to ask more about those pros and cons so that I'm not sitting here rambling forever in a day, which I wouldn't be allowed to do anyway, thank you. Let me begin my comments by saying that I'm frankly confused. The fact of the matter is, whatever assessments are going to be used will be reported publicly by all schools and districts with the goal of providing actionable data to inform school change. The fact is, the state has decided that testing must proceed, and a blanket waiver is off the table. But the fact also is, we can do better and we can do more with the options that are actually in front of us. Dr. Gregson, I urge the board at the beginning of this meeting to think about what is in the needs of the students. So, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, the test that is the foundational element of the nation's public school report card, has been canceled for this year. The U.S. Department of Education, in fact, requested that NAEP testing be canceled this spring, and the vendor complied. And the reason that the department gave for canceling the NAEP assessment was because of the pandemic. But the burden for the annual testing of every single student from grades three through eight will not be disrupted. The staff did a great job of laying out the options as well as the burdens for implementing this requirement, all to collect data for actionable change. So I'm confused. If we want to understand the impact of the coronavirus on American students, it's the NAEP test that should go forward. The NAEP assessment has been administered to scientific samples of students since the late 1960s, since 1992. It's even provided state-by-state comparisons. It disaggregates scores by race, gender, income, English language status, disability status, and other criteria. It measures achievement gaps among white students, black students, Hispanic students, and Asian students. It supplies the same valuable information for a score of urban districts that volunteer to be tested, and there are no stakes attached to the NAEP results. In short, if we're looking for actionable data to inform what's going on in schools and to understand the impact of the pandemic on students, NAEP would have been the ideal gauge for measuring that impact. Further, it meets all the requirements that were outlined in the federal guidance that the feds are willing to give states to assure that their state assessments go forward. So I'm confused. What we heard from district leadership today is that the state test should be canceled. The state test should be canceled because, and they've given multiple reasons. Students are going to opt out. The scores from this test will be meaningless. The mandated test will tell teachers nothing worth knowing, since teachers are already doing a battery of local assessments that give them more immediate actionable information about the progress that students are making, not only on weekly, but over time. They do not tell teachers information that can be used to make actionable decisions about. They do not tell teachers information that can be used to make actionable decisions about school change. The results of these tests, despite the waiver information, will still have high stakes. Otherwise, why are we still posting them in the student report, in the school report cards? I'm just saying. So, how are the options that are in front of us, that were proposed by the staff with the complete analysis, complete and proper analysis about what we can do? How are all those options truly in the best needs of the students? The proposals I saw solve our problem as a state education agency. The proposal I saw solves our problem in acquiring a waiver and figuring out some ways to flexibly support the schools. But does it actually solve the problems we heard from the district leaders and the parents who spoke about what it is they need to know about their students and being able to support them? The polling results that were reported in the presentation from the department doesn't seem to align with the comments we heard from district leadership who testified today. Every time I see a national poll on cultural attitudes and norms, I'm always surprised by the conclusions because I'm clearly certain they didn't ask me. But based on the fact that every district leader we heard a statement from today, there is no agreement or consensus among education leaders about the recommendations proposed for the board's consideration. And I'm absolutely positive that I heard clear agreement that the testing should be canceled altogether. I lost count at twenty-five for the number of times I heard a reference to the blanket waiver. If the State Board wants to decide that a blanket waiver is not in the best interest of students for the purpose of informing schools and the public, what other flexibilities can be considered that really would do, would really satisfy those needs? Nothing in the recommendations we heard, in my opinion, addresses how to assure that districts will not simply find themselves needing to bring students back to the campus for the sole purpose of testing students in order to meet the waiver we will ask for. Currently, inside the open assessment window we have, fifty-two of fifty-eight counties are still in purple status. What forecast do we have to know that that status will change to allow more districts to be able to provide the assessment support that were enumerated by district leaderships in today's testimony? Nothing in the recommendation mitigates impact identified by many stakeholders concerning military dependence, students in alternative programs, and charter schools, students in schools with twelve weeks or less of instruction remaining, schools whose assessment window will soon close. Charter schools, uh, uh, anew, uh, pointed out that current state statutes enumerate eleven alternative academic assessments for charters to use. I read in the plain language of the guidance letter that other assessments can be considered. Since we already have a statutory option for charters to use to report their information, their academic performance and progress of students, why couldn't we consider asking the feds to allow us to allow all schools to consider using it? It's the same assessment. It can be reported in a uniform way. Apparently, we've decided that they are valid and reliable for the purpose of doing the student reporting. And in order to support not only the concerns that were raised by the charter community, but by the school leaders in general who spoke today, why don't we look at something at a different level of activity, engagement, and burden that is, that could be more readily used and implemented by districts and in a way that addresses some of the burdensome concerns that were given? So I am confused, and I'm just saying. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Member Rucker. Um, I am not seeing other hands yet at the moment. Member Navo, Member Burr. So Member Navo next, and then Member Burr.
Um, I just want to thank Board, Board Member, um, Patricia that, for the, uh, for her comments because I, I really feel.
Rucker.
Rucker. I'm, I'm trying to think about what I'm going to say, Patricia, and at the same time acknowledging you. No, I appreciate that, uh, Board Member Rucker. I appreciate your comments. And I think that there's something to be said about thinking about other options. That being said, I do have a question about, um, the CAH for Rachel or Mao. And what are the implications in terms of testing? Should we, should we return or flexibilities therein for students with disabilities? Because if I remember correctly, the, the last conversation we had at the state level, that particular assessment was required to be in person, or highly encouraged to be in person. And if you couldn't, then it was, they were basically saying it would, uh, be problematic.
So, um, Member Navo, can I just make, paraphrase back to you what I heard you say to make sure that I understood your question? So you're asking, um, what, or are there additional flexibilities for, um, the alternate assessments that potentially we could explore? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, what, what exists and what could be explored?
Okay. Um, so I, I think that there's just a couple of things that I want to clarify. When we're talking about, um, the alternate assessments versus the assessments that are requested for, um, identification of students with disabilities for parents, they're, they're two very different assessments. One falls under IDEA and one falls underneath our federal requirements for, uh, for assessment. So the one that we're talking about is the alternate, alternate assessments. That one is, we would only be able to provide in person. Um, we, there are no other possible flexibilities outside for a remote administration option for that assessment for the, for the same reasons that I had mentioned previously, that the assessment requires, um, manipi- manipulatives and additional tools to be able to administer the assessment. And our regulations state that that must be done by a test coordinator. And at home, it would have to be done by a parent.
Okay, that's helpful. And, and science as well?
No, science, we would be able to, um, administer, provide a remote administration option.
Um, I just want to clarify, did you mean the California alternate assessment for science as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that will also be in the alternates group category. So it'd be the same as the ELA and math alternates as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Ma.
Okay, um, Member Burr, and then I see Members Sun and Member Glover Woods.
Thank you. Um, so I just experienced what I think many of our callers were concerned about, which was I completely lost power. And so was without the computer and without the benefit of your discussion for about the last fifteen minutes. Um, and without the benefit of my Zoom background, which went down when I, um, lost power. So anyway, I apologize. So, uh, President Darlingham, and could I just clarify, are you asking for our general comments about the discussion or just asking for additional questions?
At this point, we're open for board discussion.
Okay, all many kinds, so. Okay, um, so I will say, I did have the benefit of hearing the tail end, I think, of Board Member Rucker's comments, um, which I found very enlightening, especially the comment about the cancellation of NAEP. And I do think that if the cancellation of NAEP is any indicator about what the federal government thinks about, um, regular testing, if you will, then I would take our guidance from that. Um, a couple of things that really struck me in the comments from our public commenters, and I think I got all of them. I was counting them all. I got to thirty-eight, so I may have missed a couple. But, um, one of the compelling comments to me was administering a test does not help with reopening schools. And I feel like our number one challenge right now is to try to get the vast majority of our schools open. And all of us in our various roles know what those challenges have been and continue to be. Um, at least in Sacramento, I don't think we're going to see many of our largest districts open until April, if we're lucky. So, um, many of the commenters talked about how much instructional time, meaning in-person instructional time, would be available. And it just seems to me so limited as to make a summit of assessment, um, very difficult, uh, for any purpose. And I want to go back to a couple of opening comments I think both Mao and Rachel made about what the purpose of the test is. And one of them that was repeated a number of times is to allow for actionable change, which was the reason I asked my original question about what would the response time be in terms of getting results back? Honestly, I'd never heard an answer to that question. I'd love to hear it, to know what that would be. Because if the purpose of giving the assessment is not to provide information back for our teachers to allow them to adjust their instruction accordingly, then I think we're on a bit of a fool's errand here with trying to impose something um, that is not really helpful to our school personnel. Um, so, and I'll just close again with my opening, that all of the technical issues that were raised by a number of our comments about not having a secure browser, who knows what the home environment is like when kids are trying to take tests, I do think are really insurmountable. Um, I said I was closed, but I just have one other thing. Having lived through our conversation with the federal government in 2013, I am not in any way suggesting that's the kind of conversation we would try to have with this Department of Education, who I think really does want to be helpful. So I would suggest that our conversation with them needs to be framed in our context, leading with the percent of the students who are not even in in-person instruction, have not been, our various challenges with the digital divide. The way I read the letter was they were inviting us to have that conversation about what additional flexibilities that we might need. And so for me, I would advocate for the absolute maximum flexibility, um, consistent with many of our public commenters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, Member Burr, you asked an important question that I'd just like to pause and let Rachel, uh, respond to with respect to the turnaround time from our, uh, traditional state summit of assessments.
Sure. So, um, to that question, um, Member Burr, my understanding, and Mary Ann, please feel free to jump in if you'd like to add any additional information, is that the student score reports, um, would be available, available about four weeks after assessments are provided.
And if I might add, um, so when a student completes all components of whatever tests they're taking for their grade level, uh, we release the results electronically to the, uh, to the LEA. And so the, uh, and that would flow, that would go, um, you know, all throughout the assessment. Um, there is a period of time before we start releasing the student score reports where we conduct a, an analysis and a quality control process. And once, uh, we have a sign-off on that from the CDE, then all the student score reports just start flowing.
Thank you. Can I just say, let, let's think about that a little bit. If we don't have instruction or people giving, no one's given a test, if I understand it, from what Rachel and Mao said. And I don't know if it's just coincidence that the blueprints allowed for tests to start on the twenty-second, but it's an interesting coincidence. Um, so if, if people really don't start administering the assessments until they get back in person, and that's April, and then you've got four weeks, in theory, before results get back. Again, I just want us to think about the practical implications and the burdens that we would potentially be placing on our LEAs in trying to push this through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Member Sun.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I, you know, I, um, I'm intrigued by the comments with, um, member, from Member Rucker. I, I do wonder, have we thought outside the box enough, you know, in this, on, on this issue? And, you know, all the technical difficulties of administering the test, the validity of the data, I completely agree and, and support. And yet, I don't know, I don't think that we can wait until 2022 of spring to do an assessment. And so I wonder if we might be able to ask for maximum flexibility and, uh, for, for us to be away from the federal requirements for this year. But then, as California, think about a way that we can assess sometime in the fall when students are back in. Because I, I don't think that we can wait until spring of 2022. We need to have some type of state assessment. And yes, I completely understand that, uh, that districts and schools are doing their own interim assessments. And I, and I think that's wonderful, and I appreciate the efforts in doing that. But I do think we need to have a statewide assessment. Even the example that was given about the charter schools are using that. But that's after a scrub of a statewide assessment, so there's some comparability there. Um, so I wonder if there's a way that we might be able to do a, irrespective of the state, for us to do something in the fall. Because I also think that we need to have data for districts and, um, LEAs to start looking at their LCAPS the following year. So, um, just kind of, again, kind of thinking out of the box. And, and it feels like the, um, the, stretching the fall, the administration all the way to the fall for this year, a lot of it is, is because we're still trying to extend this school year into the next one. What if we just closed the school year and began the next school year with some type of, uh, uh, initial assessment? Just going to bring that out.
Thank you. Um, I've forgotten my order of queue. Does anybody remember who I had mentioned next? Was it Glover Woods? Member Glover Woods? I thought so. Thank you. And then just to note, I see Members Strauss, Member Patio Bronson, and Member Fatah with their hands up. So I haven't forgotten about you. Member Glover Woods.
Thank you, President Darlingham. And, um, as has been already stated, this is a very complex issue. Um, a lot of decisions to be made. And, um, just to kind of underscore again, um, two of the competing issues, if you will, is around the administration. And we understand the intent of assessments and how essential assessments are in letting us know how students are learning and how they have been learning. But I think we must also recognize the impact in many of the issues, even with a varied amount of administration options. So when we think about, um, how that impacts the accuracy of the results that would be, uh, received, we need to definitely keep that in mind. Because whether it is done remotely, and I don't have to, um, echo the comment, um, from Member Burr, and already what we know about the issues around some of the remote options for many of the students in our state, many of our districts and schools are not able to bring students back in person. It's still not quite safe to do so, and even extending into the summer. So there's just a lot of complexity on how any of these administration options will impact the accuracy of the results for students that are test. We also have to consider that there is a need to have data on how students have been, uh, be able to learn during this past year. Parents need to know how their children are doing. Children want to know how they are doing, as well as communities to know how this is impacting many students from many different student groups. So, uh, one of the things I propose, I believe it's kind of been said before, is a consideration on how to leverage some of the local assessment options that, um, LEAs have already had to commit to in their learning continuity and attendance plan. How might those local assessments be leveraged and communicated publicly? Communicated to parents to give, again, the indication for what I believe we're all saying is the importance of having the assessments, but also keeping it within the context that students are already familiar with as they've been taking many of these, um, interim assessments and formative assessments throughout the school year. Yet again, not having that data be hidden, if you will, where parents are unaware and where the community at large is not aware. So, uh, I'm wondering, as we explore flexibilities with the U.S. Department of Education, if we may be able to explore that flexibility in lieu of administering a state assessment, again, with all of the complexities that are there. One last part I'd like to add, and I will stop talking, President Darlingham, is how whatever decision we make will impact charter schools and the requirements that they now have for their renewals. And, um, again, if there is not a state assessment that is given, what does that mean for, um, many of the pieces that they are going to be held accountable for? And if we do look and, uh, feel that it's necessary to explore the flexibility of local assessments, uh, would we suggest and advocate that those local assessments only be looked at for those tested grade levels, for the state, uh, assessment? Or is there great benefit, since I believe in almost all locations in our state, those local assessments are being done for students through all grade levels to have that as part of the consideration? So we really get a true picture of what all students in the state of California who have been engaged in instruction this year, um, how, um, how they are learning so that we're able to make some. how they are learning, so that we're able to make some determinations on how to best meet their needs as we go into the new year.
Yeah. I'm going to, before I call on Member Strauss, who's next in my list, simply respond on this question of the assessments, the diagnostic and interim assessments that have been used, that it was heartening to see that virtually every district that responded to the survey that the department put out for the various questions that they asked, said that they were giving those assessments. We had required that in the instructional continuity plans. And we have published the list of assessments in the late summer, I believe it was, that have already been state-approved by this board as measuring the, you know, the state standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics. We did not do that in science, but we did do that in English. So just to augment the point that you are making. Member Strauss is next in the queue.
I just wonder, I see Judy Seis has her hand up. Should she go before me?
Yes, she should. I didn't, there you are.
Hello. Judy Seis with the State Department of Education. I wanted to respond to Member Glover Woods' question about the impact on charter schools. As we know, AB 1505 sets some renewal criteria that are based on dashboard results and looking at the last two out of three years and various indicators of the dashboard. But that's in legislation, so that is not something that's within the purview of the board. So that would take some sort of legislative fix. The verified data is within the purview of the board, the list that you all adopted back in November. But again, I think at this point, we'd have to see the broader legislative change before we get down to the verified data issue, because that, the verified data piece is for schools in the middle and low track. So we'd have to see how middle and low track would be, could be adjusted by the legislature before revisiting the verified data piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's an important question. I think Member Strauss is the next, and then Member Patilla Bronson, and then Member Fatah.
So again, I want to thank President Darling Hammond and Deputy Superintendent Chief Deputy Gregson for the framing of today, and just to say that I can't imagine any more step CD could have done to try to address all the requirements as the situation was evolving. I thought the comments that we heard from the public were incredibly articulate and thoughtful, both in the need for data to inform instruction, but also the struggles of remote assessment. So I just would go back for some key areas for me that are really important, which is, and I think that the federal guidance says, kids should not be brought back just to take the test. And I do believe there's benefit of assessment in person. So while students are remote, I actually think the complications, the equity challenges, bandwidth, family settings, the browser, all those issues, I think is not going to give us valid and reliable data. It's going to be one more hoop and incredibly frustrating. So I would just encourage us to look at the maximum flexibilities while students are in remote. Obviously, our priority is to get kids back. And I know we are starting to get more and more students back. I do think there's some research or some recommendations that say students should be back three or four weeks before they take a standardized assessment. President Darling Hammond may know, but I don't think we should bring them back. I mean, we've all talked about the need for social emotional connection, community, the separation anxiety, kids leaving home, parents' separation anxiety. Principals I've been working with are talking about needing to create a whole camp to get kids back in again after being out of school a year. It's a year since we were together in Sacramento. And so I think we need to remember that we need time to do that before we do assessment. So the amount of flexibility, I support continued shortening of the exams when possible, including the comment of thinking about taking the performance assessment into a classroom activity so that the state online assessment is shorter. I do, I think we need to look at LPAC being in person. And I would support the recommendation that if we cannot assess LPAC in person, we extend that window. I know that there's budget requirements for the legislature and governor to support. But I think for English learners, that assessment in person is essential, and I want to be sensitive to that issue. The other concern I have is, if it takes cost $74 million to do a fall assessment, I guess, as a former school leader and district leader, I could see that $74 million supporting students in a very strong, focused way that might make a bigger difference and impact than a single assessment. And so I worry about that. And so I want to look at our flexibilities within this school year and then begin the next school year, hopefully, back in person and a fresh start for kids and re-engaging. I also want to reflect the issue of local data. We required in the local, in the learning continuity plan, that districts use local data to inform instruction. That was required in SB 98. And I think districts have done that. And I think that we need to make sure that that local assessment data is being shared with parents very clearly, and then also being used to inform instructional strategies and support for students. I was working with principals this week and looking at videos of classrooms. Teachers know which kids are struggling. They know which kids have not turned their camera on, which kids have been absent, which kids are not doing assignments. We need to make sure that that is transferred into support for students. So again, I support the use of data, but not only state data, local data to inform practice. And I just remember when we were doing online AP testing last spring, you might remember those horrible stories of a student finishing the AP exam and then not being able to upload it and not getting credit for doing the AP exam. But why would we do that when students have worked so hard? I think students have worked, our teachers and leaders, they're killing themselves to do the most creative teaching in this really challenging situation. So we need to look at what this is for, to inform instruction and to see what kids know. And I just think while we're in remote setting, we need to really realize that we wouldn't be getting the valid and reliable data that we need. So again, I would support as much flexibility as possible. And again, I'd like to, again, hear from the rest of my colleagues who I know share some of these concerns and have others that they would like to add to the conversation. Thank you.
All right. Member Patilla Bronson.
I also want to just start by saying thank you to the staff members. This has been a two-day turnaround. It's really quite incredible, actually, how quickly you all have come together to put this, I think, very cogent analysis in front of us and offer appreciation for that. I also want to concur with my fellow board members who have raised up the importance of making sure that we have data that is publicly available to both educators, as well as parents and community members. And sort of the conversation around not having state-level data until spring of 2022 really seems like too big a sacrifice, and certainly one that doesn't seem to be on the table, given ongoing conversations with the federal government. I think the other aspect around the data that is going to be made available, that is, I think, a unique sort of feature of our California system, is that LCFF depends on parent and community awareness of data and making sure that we can actually continue to partner with parents and community of active, as active participants in driving what LCAPS look like and driving what local options are responsive to in terms of community need. That depends on a notion of local parents and local community members having access to the data about disparities, about how their children are doing in their local communities in a way that I think really underscores why we need data and can't afford not, can't afford to wait. I do very much also agree, though, that we need as much flexibility as that we can seek under the federal guidance. I have three very particular and discreet questions, just about how implementation and what the space for innovation might look like. The first is what happens to the reliability of the data if we go below 95%? And that's sort of more on the technical question side. The second is around what sort of flexibility we can pursue or provide to local districts around who actually proctors the exams. I am very much, I think, impacted by hearing parents and teachers and school district leaders talk about precious instructional time, right? So many kids have been out of school and the remaining time in this school year, those are scarce and precious resources that we want to make sure that we use well. And so whether there is the potential for subs to proctor the exam, so we don't lose the instructional time, whether it's potential for other school district staff and administrators or other instructional leaders to come in and provide the testing time, especially as we think about some of the offerings that have been made in terms of the state budget to extend the school year, to have summer learning time, to also extend into the July timeframe for testing, so that our kids get the benefit of as much instructional exposure and time with teachers on instruction as possible, and that we also pursue maximum flexibility in terms of what proctoring looks like. The last question, or sort of concern that I just wanted to surface is around whether it's possible to bifurcate the timelines. It seems like there is a fairly decent split between proponents of a timeline for ESVACs happening in the summer versus next fall. But I was very much influenced by the public comment around LPAC administration in the fall and wondering if there is a possibility of having a discreet timeline that does not actually determine both in the same one-shot board motion.
Thank you very much. And I see that Rachel is on screen and ready to answer some of those questions.
Yes, thank you, President Darling Hammond. So for the 95% question of what happens if we fall below the 95% to the validity and reliability of the assessment, I'm going to turn that over to Tony Alpert, the Executive Director of ESVAC, and Mary Ann to share their initial thoughts. Tony?
Thank you. So the validity and reliability is an important question. Smarter Balance staff and members took a hard look at how we can reduce the length of the assessment and still retain the validity and reliability. So at an individual student level, the test is reliable, will be reliable, and valid, assuming it's administered consistent with the test administration manual. In the aggregate, it will be more reliable and consistently valid, assuming that there's a representative sample of students that participate. So to the extent that some students are systematically omitted or overly included, then that's going to affect the interpretation of the results. So they may have to be qualified in some way. But that's an analysis that needs to take place when the data come in. And I think Mary Ann can talk a little bit more about that.
And to support or add a little bit more information as to what Tony mentioned, and I mentioned it earlier, we do plan to do a thorough analysis of the process data, too, generated from the summative assessments. And we'll use that to evaluate whether there are potential threats to the score validity. And more specifically, one of the things we are focusing on will be determining whether students experience technology challenges or if students received improper assistance during the assessment. And we'll take that analysis and use it to determine, make recommendations on the validity of the data.
I'd just like to add a point on this question. I think it is because there are challenges across the country and the administration of assessments this year that the there's been a strong consensus and the department's recommendations reflect the decoupling of the aggregate average assessment data from accountability, because it's the averages that will, you know, vary, not the individual students' results, unless there are problems in administration, based on who can take the assessment. But there are ways to evaluate who does respond, and we actually, in the government's letter to us, need to report non-response by subpopulation characteristics of students as well, so that there's a way to evaluate what kind of information we're getting about which students. And we will need to be very analytical about that, as will every state. Were there other questions, Rachel, that you were going to answer?
Yep, we have two other ones. The second question was, who can proctor the exam? And Mao, would you like to, Dr. Bing, would you like to share the regulations around proctoring?
Yes. Other than what Rachel has mentioned earlier about the, in terms of the alternate assessments, having the test examiner be someone who the student knows and works with on a regular basis. In our CASP and LPAC regulations, the definition is that if you're an employee of the district and you have been trained and signed the test security affidavit, you may be a proctor for both assessments.
And then the final question, I believe, Member Patilla Bronson, was in regards to the possibility of bifurcating timelines. And what I'm understanding you to ask, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that, or can we explore the possibility, for example, of only extending the LPAC into the fall and having the rest of the assessments be completed in the spring? Okay, then, yes, if at the board's direction, we could explore that as a possibility. My understanding from ETS is that that would be significantly less cost, possibly somewhere between 15 to 20 million just for the summative LPAC, to have an extension with a spring administration and then also with the possibility of a fall administration.
Thank you. Member Fatah, you are up next.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. And I just wanted to echo the, I guess, the equity challenges and, I think, the reliability of data. I think it's just going to be too frustrating for LEAs just to offer a student perspective on test security and the usage of these secure browsers. Just from my personal experience and the experience of numerous students, it's incredibly difficult to utilize secure browsers at home, because computers tend to, first of all, not respond well to opening it up to their firewall. And also, different computers, like, require different, like, ways of installing the secure browser. So, for example, someone might have a MacBook Pro and might need to take certain steps to be able to implement the, I guess, program to be able to take the test. And then someone might have a Chromebook, someone might have, like, a Razer laptop. And so all of these different laptops and kind of the necessities to install the secure browsers, I think, going to create an incredible headache for LEAs to kind of decipher how to be able to, you know, administer testing. Just from my experience, I just can vividly recall, at the beginning of this school year, in my economics class, we had a similar situation where we practically spent the first 45 minutes of our first exam trying to figure out how everyone could take an exam via a secure browser. And at the end of the 45 minutes, my teacher just said, okay, we'll defer the test till another day. And we came in, we took it on an unsecured location. And so I think that just the headache that is going to arise for LEAs is just going to continue to, I guess, put everyone in this position that, first of all, detracts from learning, and second of all, doesn't provide us with the reliable and the viable data that we want. At school, these are typically preloaded onto computers. And so when we hopefully do return to in-person, it will, you know, be there for us to be able to take the test. And I can just imagine the impact that this will have on taking away from the learning time, because, you know, someone will, a student will show up to take the test one day. And then, while they're kind of there, you know, in the moment, ready to take the test, they'll find out, oh, you know, I don't know how to upload this to my firewall. And everyone else would have started the test, and that student will have to return to class, having already had their day interrupted. And they will have to return again to be able to take the test. And so I think that it just takes away incredibly from the learning experience and opportunities from students. And then another point that I wanted to bring up was regarding a question that Board Member Rodriguez asked a little bit early on in today's discussion, which was regarding, if we went to the fall assessment, the option that would require which was regarding if we went to the fall assessment, the option that would require $74 million, would next year's seniors need to take the CASP? To which point I believe Rachel responded with yes. And so I think my my question kind of goes back to the overarching point that we're trying to decide on, which is making data actionable. And to which point, I think, when we're assessing seniors and we're assessing students who are in their senior year of high school and we get the data back in December or November, I don't think that the data becomes as actionable when they only have six months of of high school left. I think it's a lot more actionable if we were to take a different approach to testing and were not to do it in the fall. And I think that the $74 million cost, just echoing what Board Member Strauss said earlier, can have a lot bigger of an impact than a single assessment and will be a lot more actionable if we take a different approach. And so for those reasons, I guess that's that's what I have to say.
Thank you. It's wonderful to have an expert in our midst. We appreciate it. Member Rodriguez and then Member Patio Bronson, did you raise your hand again? Or is it just still up? Okay. So, Member Rodriguez, you may have the last word before we ask for a motion.
Okay, that's a lot of pressure. I, you know, I think Member Strauss and I are sort of like telepathically communicating because everything that you said, you know, you you basically cut my comments short. And so I completely agree with you and I appreciate all of the comments that have already been stated. And the tech the tech problems with the testing that Member Fatah just talked about, you know, we've been there with the AP testing and it has been very difficult. But that said, I want to, I in in 2001, right, the day before nine 11, we opened a school in East Palo Alto. And when we were, the teachers were getting ready to talk to the students about nine 11 and try to explain to them the following day, you know, and I was like facilitating a group conversation on terrorism. A student looked up at me and said, I don't care about what happened in New York. And I was just like, oh, and she said, somebody just was killed in front of my house yesterday. And then I thought, yes, why, that's like so far away. And this is happening in her home. And and I was reminded of this yesterday when one of my students told me that she's lost four family members in the last month to COVID. And this is very real, what our students are going through. And they're they're going through a post, a traumatic stress, right, which will be post. But they're in the middle of like surviving. My students are scared about their parents, making sure that their parents stay alive. There's, they have a lot of pressures right now. And I think that testing under these circumstances, you know, where they're at home taking taking an exam would just exacerbate the stress. A lot of my high school students are actually making sure that their little siblings tune into their Zoom classes and they're watching them. And they tell me I'm going to turn my camera off because I have, you know, my my siblings are in the background. And they're very conscientious when they lose their technology. They get super stressed out and send me a remind message like, I'm sorry, you know, just like Member Burr did right now, right? You know, the stress, like I I'm letting somebody down is is how they feel. And I just, I don't want to add to their stress. And I and I fear that that having them test under these circumstances right now would. You know, and I'm all in favor of collecting data with, you know, what we have on school, what we've committed to at the at our school sites and producing it in a way that we can, we can know where our students are and where we need to get them, right? And where 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 we may have some gaps and, you know, help them, help them achieve and and be able to fill those gaps. So I will close with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see Member Strauss's hand is raised. I'm hoping you might be ready to make a motion.
I am. So what I'd like to do really is to summarize first some main themes that we've heard today that I've been taking notes on from both the presentation and the comments from board members. And then after that, I've asked staff to type up some recommended motions and appreciate what Member Patio Bronson said, is there's five separate motions, so you'll be able to see those as well. So for some areas of consensus that I think we're hearing, which is that California should pursue a waiver of accountability provisions and the 95% participation rate. The purpose of assessments is to gather data to guide teaching and learning and improving instructions. That's the first thing. No student should be required to come to school on just solely for the purpose of in-person testing and as per the federal guidance that was released on Monday, the 22nd. And it's preferred that students take the annual summative assessment in person to ensure that the results are valid and reliable. And as the U.S. Department of Education acknowledges, some schools and some school districts may face circumstances in which they are not able to safely administer statewide summative assessments in person. So while the districts are beginning to come back for in-person instruction and we're working intently as a state to facilitate that occurring, some districts may not be back for in-person instruction until close to the end of the school year or even later. And and even as districts are able to get back to school in person, there are some complex issues that they're working on, ranging from managing new routines required by mitigation strategies to supporting students who are experiencing trauma in their lives and also seeking to understand and address the learning gaps. So we need to prioritize the use of time for assessments, focusing first on ELA and math and ensuring that English language learners can be assessed in the LPAK. The board has already approved a shortened assessment for math and English language arts. So we'd like CDE to explore with the test contractor other options to shorten the assessment, such as providing the option to locally administer the performance test in the classroom, which would really shorten testing time further for districts that might want to or need to pursue that option. We should also take up the U.S. Department of Education's offer to work with us to meet our needs and conditions as they have recognized that individual states like California may need additional assessment flexibility based on state-specific circumstances, such as substantial majority of students who've engaged in remote learning throughout the entire 2021 school year. So because of some of these options are going to require approval by the legislature and or the governor, the goal is for the board to provide decision rules and options and to delegate authority to staff so we can move expeditiously. So with that, that's my background. I have five separate motions and I'm going to ask staff to share so you can see. These have been tweaked based on the comments that we've heard and I think address the issues that we want to address each motion separately. There'll be five separate motions. And then I will read it once you can see it. So motion one is to direct, can everybody see that, I hope? To direct CDE to prepare a waiver consistent with the federal template regarding flexibilities offered by ED for accountability and school identification, which includes decoupling accountability from this year's assessments and waiving the requirement that the academic achievement indicator to be adjusted to account for a petition participation rate below 95%. So that's motion one. President Darlene Hammond, I'll read all five and then we'll take them up individually, if that's okay. Motion two is to extend the 2021 test administration window for both the CASP and LPAK from July 15th to July 30th, if it proves necessary, and to add a second fall test administration window for the 2021 school year for the LPAK from August 15th to October 30th. But that'll be contingent on the authorization of resources provided by the legislature and the governor. Motion three directs CDE to prepare a general waiver of the California Science Test for 2021 school year, recognizing that students have mostly been remote and not in school working on our new science standards with aligned materials and how hard it's been to teach science remotely. Motion four directs CDE to pursue the option for districts that would like to do so of locally administering the CASP math and ELA performance test in the classroom so they can reduce the testing time for the 2021 school year. And finally, motion five, delegate the authority to the SPE Executive Director in collaboration with CDE staff to develop guidelines to ensure the use of data from state-approved assessments measuring California standards to provide valid and reliable information to parents about their children's progress and to inform instructional decisions and targeting of resources to support student learning in local education agencies. This is important where pupils have not been in-person instructional settings long enough to appropriately assess them using the state's summative assessments. So those are the five separate motions. I'll turn it back to President Darlene Hammond for clarification on each and maybe we take them up one at a time.
Wow. So that's a, that's quite a mouthful. I'm sure people need to adjust all of that for a moment. May I ask a couple of questions about intent in some of these? Just so that everyone will have a shared understanding of what your idea is. And then I see that there's Member Rucker's hands is up and there'll be some other hands that come up, I'm sure. With respect to the it seems to me that an underlying assumption behind this is that while some districts might be able to do some remote testing, that we should not be relying on that as a primary way to do assessment. Is that, am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, that's correct, that we would assume that students come back to school and have several weeks before being given an assessment in person that that would then be valid and reliable. So motion five addresses if students are not able to have a valid and assessment situation, then this is the backup for those LEAs that aren't able to do it.
Then I'm assuming that the diagnostic and benchmark assessments that districts have been using that were mapped to our standards that we approved are the ones that you're thinking about there.
And number five is for the local continuity, learning continuity plan that districts already had approved by their county office, that they would use that data, providing parents support and information if they're unable to provide a valid and reliable in-person assessment.
Just to make a comment, I did hear other board members saying how important it is for whatever data we're making available to be publicly available beyond the parents. So that may be another piece of that question. And you asked earlier, who was it that said that kids should be back in school for three or four weeks before assessment? And I didn't answer it then, but Scott Marion is the head of the Center for Assessment. And he, they they make that recommendation. So that's where that came from. Another question I have just for clarification on the science test, is it your assumption that because we don't have a shorter version of that or a backup version of that, that that's why you would make that motion?
Yeah, that's a really hard motion. I'm one of the liaisons for NGSS and the science implementation. And we've worked so hard since 2014 to get our new standards and implementation. But districts didn't even fully purchase their aligned science materials before the shutdown happened. And teachers have worked, really struggled to try to provide science in a limited instructional minutes. And so it seems like that one might be worth just delaying a year to get a real valid experience once students are back in class.
And I assume, so the, thank you. I just, I'm sure that that other people will ask questions about other ones that they need to understand more fully. So in terms of who I have here on the screen, I have Member Rucker and then Member Novo and then Member Burr.
Okay, so Eileen, first of all, I want to thank you for working, paying attention to the conversation that happened and especially listening to my request for us to try to divide these motions to take them up one at a time. I would also like to request, if possible, for that the board members receive an email of these motions so that I can actually have them to hold on to and read as we go through and do the voting. So I have a few questions, starting with
Can I just ask quickly before you launch into the other questions? Is that possible to do? I think I'm probably asking the staff.
Yes, Linda, we'll make sure it gets done right now.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Member Rucker.
Okay, so starting with the link between motion one and motion five. So motion one is contemplating using the state assessments in the CASP to be consistent with the application that we would be submitting for the federal template. Is that correct?
My comment, Member Rucker, is to deal with the 95% issue. That's what that's for.
Okay, but that's not my question. My question is, are the tests that you're talking about that would be reported, that states would be, the districts would be allowed to ignore the 95% participation rate? Are the tests the students would be participating and taking the tests that are in the CASP?
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Bing.
I think I just learned that Rachel may have a comment on one of these questions. Is that right?
I can, President Darlene Hammond, I can save my comment instead of just a clarifying piece for motion two, and I can wait until we get to that place.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Member Rucker.
Okay, so then, as it relates to the linkage between motion one and motion five, the way, the guidance letter says, whatever statewide assessment we give, that information has to be posted as well. So it seems to me you're giving some duplicate reporting responsibilities as it relates to the purpose of this waiver, the states. They are all, districts are already supposed to be collecting the information related to these local assessments and using that to inform how they frame, revise, or update their LCAP or the Learning Continuity Plan. So I'm not sure where the reporting, as it's related to what you discussed in item five, where that actually is going. Are you only reporting it for the local purposes? Or is this reporting in any way related to the waiver itself for motion number five?
So as part of your question, Member Rucker, whether the use of those assessments for providing data to parents would also be reported to at the district or state level?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
Okay. I just want to be sure I understood the question.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. And thank you for asking it, putting it in a better way. I appreciate that.
I'm trying to follow the conversation here.
I'm not kidding when I tell you, I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
So I'll answer, and then I think President Darlene Hammond or Dr. Mays might be able to answer. But the intent on number five is if you're not able to give the state assessment in person in a reasonable way to get valid information, then you revert to the assessments that you've already gotten approved in your learning continuity plan. Now, those I don't believe would be reported. But they would be reported to parents on how students were doing, but not in the state data system. So
So I'm going to restate, I mean, I'm going to rephrase what I think I heard you say. So this is, so with this collection of five waivers, the link between waiver one and waiver two is this. You're creating some flexibility for districts that are, say, the 52 of the 58 districts that are in purple and currently closed and cannot give in-person assessments. You're giving them an option to use something other than the statewide assessments to collect information about the performance of students on English language arts and mathematics. Is that correct?
If they are unable to return in person in enough time to administer prior to July.
Okay, so, but if, but for the districts that do return for in-person assessments, in-person instruction in time, to give this within the window that we're contemplating extending, they would give the state assessments, the CASP assessments. Is that correct? Is that correct, Board Member Strauss?
That is correct.
So that would mean if I voted yes on motion one and yes on motion five, there's a possibility that we could have districts, as a result of this testing window this year, giving two different types of assessments to their students to address the waiver that we've asked the feds to approve. Is that, is that correct?
I don't understand that.
No, no, it's my understanding, under this proposal, and again, President Darlene Hammond can clarify, or Executive Director can, is that if students are back in person in enough time to give a reliable test, that's what they give. If they aren't able to return in enough time to give the valid and reliable tests, then they use the local, the data that was already approved in their local learning continuity plan. So they, if they gave the assessment during the So they, if they gave the assessment during the spring window all the way to July, they wouldn't. They, that would be what they would be reporting. And again, I would ask staff to follow up on Member Rucker's clarification question.
Okay, yeah, see, that's why I'm confused, because, yeah, so I'll stop and see if somebody else can ask the question better, because it seems to me, for example, if, and if I have anybody on this, listening to this, who's from the districts I'm about to name, please don't get mad with me. So if Elk Grove Unified School District has returned fully to in-person instruction, Motion One would require them to give the CASP, the S-Back assessment. Is that correct? Is that correct, Board Member Strauss?
That is what the motion states.
Okay, but if...
So what I'm dealing with, the 90, reducing the participation rate below 95%, that's what the intent of Motion One is.
Okay, so that's my, that's where I'm confused. So I live in Placer County. So if the district where I live in Placer County is not able to return the full-time in-person instruction, they would have this flexibility on how they administer the state assessment that a district like Elk Grove would not have, because they're going to be using the state assessment, and they will not be able to use it in the way that Elk Grove will. That's why I'm confused. It seems like these two different motions are creating two different sets of permissions for districts, and I'm not sure that's what we're trying to do. That's why I'm confused.
I don't know all the details of what is possible in this context, but I know that Rachel was waiting to give some clarification on at least one point, so I would suggest that we should get that clarification. I think, and Eileen, you can clarify the intent. The intent is, as I read it, was that in the law, there's a requirement to get information every year to parents about their children and their progress. And if it's not possible to give that information from the state summative test, because the conditions for giving that test are not appropriate for, for the, you know, context of that the use of other assessment data would be to meet that aspect of the law is what would be recommended. Am I on track with that, Eileen? And then there's the question of whether you report it beyond that, and I think that's a separate question that we need to take up, you know, after we get the first question straight.
President Darling-Hammon, may I clarify one piece of that? So in the letter, it makes it pretty clear that it has not waived the requirement to report out your data in the SARCP. So regardless if you use a local assessment or you use the summative, that requirement still stands that you would report that information within the SARCP and also to parents. The second piece that I just wanted to clarify quickly for Motion Two, and I apologize if I didn't make this clear earlier, we cannot offer for the assessments to go through July 30th for the LCAP and for the, and offer a fall administration window as well. There's not enough time for our contractor to be able to turn over the assessment information with a new year of data, because remember, they have to close out the school year from 2021, and then have another school year with new student information from 21, 22. So to go from July 30th and then only have potentially a 15-day window isn't enough time. So it can't be an "and both," it has to be an either-or.
Okay. That's an important point for us to clarify.
So then that clarifies the information I was asking for. So as it relates to Motion One and Motion Five, why, I would like to ask, is why can't we, for both motions, allow the, ask the feds to give us the flexibility to use the local assessments that all districts already have to use as part of their LCAP? Because those are considered, those have been adopted by the board, those are valid and reliable. All districts, including charter schools, use those alternative assessments and those local assessments regularly now and can administer them, whether we are using them virtually or for in-person instruction. And it seems like those assessments as a class of assessments would solve the burden issues and the timeline and delivery issues, both for Motion One and Motion Five.
So that's a very deep question, which I want to put a pin in and come back around to.
I'm sorry, but I just want to ask that question. Thank you very much.
Because it would imply having no statewide data. So that, that would be the question about that. So I'm going to move, I think next we have, did I call who was going to come next? I can't recall. I don't think so. All right, I'm just going to go across my list here. Member Patio Bronson, Member Sun, Member Navo, Member Burr, and then Member Glover Woods.
So I have a couple of questions just about how this would work mechanically, because there are K to, or TK to 12 districts that may open for elementary and have in-person instruction, but I think it's an eventuality, or at least a possibility, that some of those same districts may not open for upper-grade middle school and high school in person. I'm very much hoping that we get there anyway, but just trying to figure out how, would that essentially give rise to the situation that Board Member Rucker was describing, where elementary students might be required to do the CASP, but they're junior high or middle school and high school students might not? I also wanted to pick up on the thread that Board President Darling-Hammon described of parent-facing data as distinct from public-facing data, and whether there's state-level data that would not just be available to parents, who I think are absolutely a critical audience, but also whether the data that is made available to parents is something that they would have to actually hunt around for in the SARCP to find, or whether it would go directly to parents, as is the case with S-Back data. Also, on the state-level question, and this is maybe more of a descriptive question, for the existing validated data sources that the SBE has already approved previously around sort of data collection that's short of CASP data, would there be an effort under Motion Five for there to be some almost preferred data sources that are more consistently used across LEAs, so that you could actually see trend and differentiation between LEAs? I think a lot of the audience that we think about is sometimes local, and sometimes it is our state legislative partners who want to know if, if across the board, a school, school districts are seeing big gaps, or whether it's just one district using one data source that looks pretty good, so that you can have some comparability across districts. And then the last question on Motion Five, I'm just assuming, but would love to have it named explicitly, that the data that would be provided at the district or LEA level would be disaggregated data. So you can see racial trends and socioeconomic trends, so that once we get to the stage of thinking about learning acceleration into 2022, that we know where to be laser-focused and targeted. That was a lot of questions.
I'm going to just make one comment, and then if Rachel or others want to, or Eileen wants to clarify anything in her motion, which is that we have recently received the aggregated reports from the core districts that used a number of those assessments. Some of you may have seen one version of the study that Hasted using those data, but other reports have come in since then that have been able to show the aggregated data at the district level, because it's in their student dataset. Presumably, every student is identified with the, with the score that they received, so it's conceivable and would seem to me likely that you could report that certainly at the district level in a disaggregated way. And they were able to report across districts because they had assembled that dataset. I'm not sure whether that would be routinely possible, because that was available only because of the core consortium. But reporting in a disaggregated way at the district level should be possible when you have a district-wide test. They were able to report that by grade level, by, you know, socioeconomically disadvantaged, by race and ethnicity, by language background, and that is something that is routine in a dataset where you would locate test scores with student records, just to clarify that. One piece that I understood. Rachel, did you want to add anything to any of those questions?
No, I don't think so, not at this time.
I'm going to go to, is that okay, Member Patio Bronson? That's what we've got it right now. I think we'll have to go to Member Sun.
Thank you. So, yeah, just, I'm pursuing a bit the trend that Member Rucker was going down with Motion One and Five, and the potential bifurcation of schools that open earlier, being required to take the full CASP, and then allowing schools, districts that open later to use the local assessments. And I just, I think we set up a situation where we're disincentivizing, in some ways, schools from opening earlier, because then they would have to be under this onus of taking the full CASP or the CASP same. And I just don't think that is how we want to set this up. So I think we have to face that if we are, that we're either going to have state data or we're going to have local data. And I don't think we can try to, to separate the two or try to bifurcate this. I don't think it would set up a system that is fair and equitable across. So I'm really, I'm frustrated, not with any one, just the situation that we are in. And I do find it unacceptable not to have statewide data until 2022. So I'm not quite sure, I can go through each of these motions, and there are aspects of it that, that I would go for, but I, I feel we haven't had enough time to explore all the options and what the, what some of the technical aspects would be for administering or having some kind of a statewide assessment pulse before spring of 2022, if we were to waive spring of 21.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if anyone wants to respond to that, or we'll just, we'll get, we'll keep all the comments going, and then we'll come back around to them. Member Burr.
The wrong button, I apologize. So I'm probably as confused as I hear other people being. And so I, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to try the, let's kick the can down the road approach. We have another meeting in three weeks. We just got the federal guidance two days ago, and as everyone has said, and I neglected to say, the department staff and the board staff have done a Herculean effort in pulling together what they have in two days. But I think as comments that have been shared by all of my colleagues indicate, this is an unbelievably complex problem. It's very hard to unravel everything. I think it's very hard to come up with a solution on the fly, which is what we're trying to do. I don't, I think you have, know from my comments, I'm not supportive of having a test administration, a state-level test administration, given all of the issues that many of us have already identified. And so I'm, I can't support some of these motions for that reason, Number Two, Motion Two, for example. Honestly, I think Motion Five is written in such a way as to be almost incomprehensible. It doesn't clearly state, what I heard Board Member Strauss, and I know in her heart she believes that kids need to be back in person in order to administer the test, but that just doesn't work with these other ones where they're kind of interrelated to me. So I guess I would like to offer for consideration, giving the staff some time to go back and take a deep breath and go, okay, we've heard what everyone had to say, we understand what the input is primarily from the field and from our, our stake, other stakeholder groups, and let us think about this for a week or two. I think that there's no rush. I was really worried about the rush, but if we just open essentially the testing window on Monday, I don't know that waiting a couple of weeks, when 90% of our kids are not even back in person, is going to make that much difference. So I just like to put that out there as an option for us to consider.
Thank you. Member Navo?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to jump in from here and jump back on, but I, I wanted to get some thoughts down. So with regarding the motion, what I, I agree with Board Member Burr. You know, I really feel at this point that there's a, if we're listening to our constituents, we've got to have a motion somewhere in there for a blanket waiver to state testing. And I feel like it's maybe a little bit more simple for me, and certainly not necessarily correct, but it seems like we have to give the field some kind of direction. So it's either pursue, a motion to pursue a blanket waiver from testing, that's one option, a motion to pursue full flexibilities around testing administration with an extended window of some sort to, at least July 30th. I think if locals understand the complexities and the cost associated with doing a fall administration, I think their opinions might be different. And to the extent that either one of those come together, we anchor to, we're going to take our S-Back, and that, we do the best we can as a state. To complicate it with bifurcated systems, some using local measures, some using state measures, I think, yeah, we do create a lot more problems. So if I was sitting in a local seat, and I'm listening to the conversation, I'm listening to three options I have. I have, one, a motion for a blanket waiver that, that the feds are highly likely to not approve. Two, a motion for full extended flexibilities with the best I can do is an extended waiver to July 31st for testing, if they don't approve the blanket waiver. And three, we all anchor in and take the S-Back. And with whatever other motions of flexibility we need. But I really feel like at this point, that in the best interest of students in the state of California, at this, at this point in juncture in time where we sit, that I can't help but feel that it's not in their best interest to test them. It's in other people's best interest to test them, because we need data. But what they're focused on, and what families are focused on, and what certainly most educators would be focused on, is the reentry and recovery of students as they re-enter school. So for me, I lean heavily with Board Member Burr, and I, unless I missed it, Board Member Strauss, I didn't see a motion for an option for the blanket waiver, and I'd like to at least consider that. And with that, Board Member Linda Darling-Hammon, I'm going to have to jump and jump back on, unfortunately.
Okay, we'll ask you more questions when you jump back on. Member Glover Woods?
I just think Member Navo, as he's jumped off, for really articulating what I was thinking as well. I do have a concern based on the conversations that we've had with just the ambiguity in who would give a state assessment and who would use local assessments. I think we open up just a can of worms for a lot of confusion and trouble in a time that's already confusing. What we've heard overwhelmingly is the desire for the pursuit of a blanket waiver. As Member Navo, I think, again, very eloquently said, it would seem that it's almost a tiered approach, approach and submit a blanket waiver. If that is denied, then look at the other option that is available, which, if it is denied, it looks like the only other option would be to administer, either extend the testing window or administer in the fall. And based on the comments and based upon the information that's been prepared by CDE staff, it seems that the extension of the testing window would be better than trying to do a fall administration. I, while I appreciate, again, the complexity of the decisions that need to be made, thus the complexity of the motions we have before us, I think it creates a lot of confusion, and I would be concerned if we're not able to simply... to simplify and be more direct. If we are indeed going to take up any of the motions today, that we're going to create more confusion in the field and we're going to move away from the original intent of this conversation, which is what to do and best for students.
Can I just inquire? Well, I'll come back about the, the point that you're making. I think a question I would have if we were to be asking for a blanket waiver at this point and waiting for the response is, first of all, the department has signaled that they're not inviting those waivers. So there's not likely to be a positive response. Would we jeopardize districts even further in, you know, the timeline that they've asked us to get clarity on for them? So I think there's a really important point about the ambiguity of number five, but there's other ambiguity created by a, a solution that takes us for too far, too much further down the road timewise. Member Petio Bronson?
Sorry, I was still up.
Member Rucker?
Yes, let me just say again, I think that I agree, I absolutely agree with Board President Darling-Hammond that the plain language of the letter states that the feds are not inviting blanket waivers. But the language in the waiver, in the letter also says that they do not want to see states creating a proposal that will simply bring students back to school for the purpose of taking the test, that they will consider in the waiver request, the conditions that exist in the state. In California, 52 of 58 school, county office counties in our state are in the purple. And so rather than just simply saying, we need a complete waiver, we should state that we need the flexibility to waive the assessment requirement in those counties where it is clearly not recommended that schools should reopen solely for the purpose of bringing school, students back to school. That falls far short of a blanket waiver, but it gives us the ability to maximize the kind of flexibility we can ask for. None of these wave, none of these motions contemplate that as a consideration. And I do believe the feds will look seriously at that for us because that would, the architecture of designating those colors, designating those safety conditions and doing the scenario evaluations for those, for those levels in that status, that was scientifically and publicly done to affect all public entities, not just schools. So I think that that is something that the feds should be asked to consider. I think that that will solve some of the flexibility issues we have. It will still fall within the confines of addressing definitely the 95% participation rate waiver, but I think we need to contemplate how to maximize giving flexibility in the local context because there are just going to be some schools that can't do this. And the letter and the, the plain language of the letter clearly says, we can make a case and frame what our state conditions are. These motions currently do not do that.
So thank you, Member Rucker. I actually think that that's probably the intention of, of number five, which is confusing now. And you've suggested proposing some just objective standards for where that flexibility would be. And I think that's a useful idea for us to take up. What, I think I just heard a voice, so I want to be sure if somebody was trying to.
President Darling-Hammond, it's Rachel. Can I just offer maybe three thoughts to, for consideration that I may be helpful for the discussion? One is, I, just for consideration, a blanket waiver, if we submit one, would take months for us to find out if it was approved or not. So I, I think the time, timing of that, we would need to consider. And to your point, it's been made pretty clear that a blanket waiver would not be approved. So that's one piece for consideration. I think the second piece for consideration, and I think it was Member Navo that I heard say this, the idea of administering the summatives and everyone just do the best that you can, that's where the majority of the states that we are hearing are, are moving forward, understanding the context and that everyone is just going to do the best that they can. So for what that's worth, the, the final thing that I thought, as I'm listening to the conversation, it sounds like the, the majority of the angst or the questions are coming up around the ELA and the math assessments. So I'm wondering if it's possible for us to identify if there's some commonality or agreement in some of the other areas. So for example, when you look at motion one, it really is just express, expressly decoupling any sort of accountability from assessments, regardless of what assessments we give. So I, I think that there might be some, from everything I've heard at least, a, a desire to move in that direction. And that doesn't necessarily require that we define what that looks like yet. The second piece is for the science waiver. That's been proposed, and I think that that might be something that, that you could look at having a motion for. And then the, the third piece would be specifically for the LPAC. Is that something that you want to potentially explore, providing a fall administration option to or going to July 30th? So for what it's worth, I just thought from everything that I'm hearing, maybe we could be able to find some, some commonality within those areas.
If we parse it that way, what the remaining then major question is, is whether we adopt the approach that, as you said, many states are taking, which is, you know, just do the best you can. And for states, I know I talked to the Texas Commissioner yesterday, you know, they're, they're also ruling out remote assessment because of all the problems we've heard about. And they're just saying, when you're in person, do the best you can to give the assessment where it's possible to give it and to the students who are available to take it. So that's one strategy. Another strategy is to have some flexibility around an objective measure, as Member Rucker was suggesting, that has to do with availability for in-person education and, and assessment. A third possibility would be to ask for the diagnostic assessments to be used across the board, and we would be essentially saying we would not have statewide data. So I think those are really, as far as I can tell, the buckets into which the others fall. And maybe what we should do is take a break for about 15 minutes. Let us figure out how to frame up the, you know, the options. Rachel, that was extremely helpful to sort of identify where I think we may have some easy things to check off and then look at those other buckets. And we could make the judgment, I think the fourth option, as Member Burr said, is to wait until the March meeting. That is three plus weeks away. And I do think that the field wants some direction and needs some direction. But, you know, we can decide whether that's a viable option as well. So why don't we take 15 minutes? It's 12:35 or maybe even 20 minutes. Let's give, start, give ourselves 20 minutes. You might even be able to grab a, a half of the sandwich and come back and we'll, you know, figure out which options we can take up today and what we need to punt till later. Don't turn, don't leave the room, just turn off your camera. To reestablish the quorum?
Of course, Member Burr. President Darling-Hammond?
Here.
Member Fatah?
Here.
Member Glover Woods?
Here.
Member McQuillan?
Here.
Member Navo?
Here.
Member Petio Bronson?
Here.
Member Rodriguez?
Here.
Member Rucker?
Here.
Vice President Strauss?
Here.
Member Sutton?
Here.
Member Burr?
Here.
Everyone's present and accounted for.
Okay. I would like to see if Rachel would be willing to review, since we had some board members who were out for a moment, the three things that you felt we should move forward on immediately or could potentially, and then I'll redefine the buckets that are left and then we'll proceed with the conversation.
Okay, that sounds great. So from the conversation, as I had shared before, it sounded like most of the discussion that needed further exploration was around the math and ELA casp assessments. So the motion number one is specific to decoupling accountability from assessments, regardless of which direction you choose to go in with the assessments piece. The first one is truly just about relief from the accountability requirements at the federal level. The second option, we could put the casp aside for right now and focus on the LPAC. Do you want to provide an extended window for the LPAC? And if so, through July 30th or an optional, additional window into the fall, pending of course, approval from the legislature for additional funding for that window. And then the third motion that I see presented is around the waiver for the science assessment.
And then, thank you very much, very helpful organizers. And then it seems like the other options that have been placed on the table are whether to pursue a blanket waiver and what would that mean? Whether to adopt the strategy that many states are taking, which is do the best you can when you're back in person and, you know, assess those students that you can with the statewide summative test and then just no data for other students or no particular, you know, strategy for other students. The third is, I think what this set of motions was intending, which was to ask folks who are able to move forward to give the state assessments and then to have some, potentially a decision rule, as Member Rucker suggested, for where we need to request flexibilities. And then the fourth idea was maybe we punt some of this till March, and I think we have to sort out what, to be fair to the field, can be punted and, and what, what, you know, they need some indications on to be able to, to move forward. So what I'd like to do is deal with the first three of those that Rachel outlined initially and see if we can get some of the low-hanging fruit off the table, if you will, and then come back to a discussion of, of the other choices that we have. So the first of those is motion one. So why don't we see if we have a, someone ready to make, and maybe Eileen, you'd like to do this.
Okay.
We've got a new, we've got a new thing coming up here.
I think it's just highlighted.
Okay.
So thank you for doing that. So motion one, direct the CD to prepare a waiver consistent with the federal template regarding flexibilities offered for ED, by ED for accountability and school identification, which includes decoupling accountability from this year's assessments and waiving the requirement that the academic achievement indicator be adjusted to account for participation below 95%. So I move approval of motion one.
I will second.
Thank you very much. Is there further discussion of that motion? Hearing no further discussion? Yes, Member Burr, sorry.
Sorry. Well, I'm just confused about whether the last part of that motion about waiving the requirement related to the academic achievement indicator, I think that's related to whether or not we give the statewide assessment. Is that accurate? Isn't that what the academic indicator is?
The academic achievement indicator in normal times does assume that the assessment you're giving is the statewide summative test.
So I, I mean, I, I understand that this seems like it's the easy one because we want to get, I won't say, you know, we, we, we don't think the accountability requirements should be in place because of all the challenges we've been talking about. But I just don't know if by adopting this motion, it presumes some action that we're going to take on the statewide assessment. So that, that's just my only concern about that one.
We could, go ahead.
Can we just simply say, in waiving the requirement to account for participation at the rate below 95%, waiving the requirement for participation rate of 90, of, of 95%? Because it does sound like having that academic achievement indicators just kind of odd when the 95% participation is a, the part of the federal law.
Maybe I could provide a clarification.
Meaning of the 95%, what the, I'm sorry, just to be clear, what's being invited is, this, this language is specific to what's being invited.
I see.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
And President Darling-Hammond, could I just make a clarification to the 95% piece as well? So there are two places in statute where the 95% rule is discussed. One is the requirement for the 95% participation rate. And then the other is the linking of the 95% participatory, participation rate to the academic indicator. What the waiver presented, the letter presented from the Department of Education was the waiver, the decoupling of the 95% participation rate to the academic indicator. The requirement just in general for the 95% participation is still in place. There's just no consequence to it.
Does that clarify sufficiently? Maybe not, but it, that's what it is. Member Burr, did you want to, you have us still up. So I mean, I think what yours suggested is you'd want to be sure that this, if we did a vote on this, we'd decouple it from, if there were the use of the state summative assessments that this would pertain.
But I will just say that, and I saw Ting's reaction, that Rachel's clarification in some ways makes this even more of a conundrum because how on the earth are we going to get a 95% participation rate if we decide to give the state test? I mean, I don't, did I misunderstand?
Yeah, let me just try another way of articulating and also punt it back to Rachel for a further explanation. The 95% participation rate is still in the law. The way in which it has had a meaning for states is because it was coupled with accountability requirements. This would decouple it from the accountability requirement. It does not remove it, you know, from the, from the law, so to speak. Rachel, do you want to try another explanation?
No, what you said is accurate. And, and I think to your point, Member Burr, whether you give the summative or we use a different assessment, I think there's question around meeting that standard.
And discussions I've heard in some places, the goal of having the state summative plus the option for alternatives where necessary in a flexible way is in part intended to help people get to a higher participation rate in assessments so that more parents and more students will have access to assessment data. But there is not going to be a, an accountability link to the 95% participation rate if one asks for this flexibility that's what offered in the waiver. Member Rucker?
My question was similarly related to Board Member Burr's question concerning the academic achievement indicator. I'm not sure that there is a way to wordsmith this motion to address the guidance to the staff to make the application as it relates to the first waiver enumerated in the guidance letter. I think that there is a, because this does decouple the assessment itself from the accountability reporting requirements, the most important function that this motion serves is to give the staff the guidance that we intend to apply for that flexibility. The second piece about the assessment itself is part of that additional consideration for our circumstances, the unique, the circumstances unique to our state that we're going to have to explore in a separate and distinct waiver. So while I do, I am very clear that this is related to the assessments identified that the state uses for its academic indicator. I believe we're going to have a second, different conversation, a separate waiver to talk about that assessment and how we're going to try to address this in the most practical. to talk about that assessment and how we're going to try to address this in the most practical way there.
Can we add the two words to this motion as applicable?
As applicable, I think would be a good way to do it, yes.
And then we will make the determination about the applicability shortly. With those clarifications, any further discussion of this motion? All in, oh, we need a roll call vote. Brooks, can you call the roll?
Of course. So on the motion as amended, Member Burr.
Aye.
President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Pata.
Aye.
Member Glover Woods.
Aye.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Navo.
Aye.
Member Patio Brownson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Rucker.
Yes.
Vice President Strauss.
Yes.
Member Sun.
Aye.
Pass unanimously.
Okay. President Darlene Hammond, could I just add one piece as a reminder as well to this? And I'll, and I'll probably continue to say this throughout the day just so that we have some clarification and remember to keep this in the forefront of our minds. But the motion that just passed relieves us from the federal requirements. It does not relieve us from the state requirements. So for all of these things, I just want there to be a reminder that we are still held to the state requirements and it will require a vote from the legislature.
Yes. I don't know if I'm freezing or if Rachel is freezing, so I'm going to move to another place to see if we get better wifi.
President Darlene Hammond, I don't think it's on your end.
No, it was Rachel that froze.
It's Rachel. There, she's back. She's moving again. She's speaking again. Okay.
Oh no, did you all hear me?
We did, we did. We heard that all of these things require state legislative approval as well. So thank you for reminding us of that. We'll try to hold that in our mind. I actually think that motion two is not as simple as it might be because we would have to make a judgment about whether we want to extend the administration window for the CASP or for the LPAC, if we're just restricted to the LPAC to July 30th or to the fall, because we can't have both. And so I'm not sure that we know the answer to that yet. And it might be one of those things that we can make a a motion that we want to extend the LPAC window and come back in March and say how far we think we can extend it once we have more input. But I would be, I would welcome Rachel, your thoughts about that in terms of whether you feel we have enough input from the field to know what kind of extension would be preferable for the LPAC.
Well, I, I think similar and unfortunate to other situations that we've been in with the pandemic, in order for us to move any of the assessments to the fall and to provide a fall administration option, we would have to make that decision today. In order for ETS to prepare an entirely new fall administration window, they would have to start work on that immediately. So it's, and again, I apologize for the timeliness of this, but that's, that is one that we would have to consider right away.
I remember, I, I take your word and I appreciate all the complexity here. I do remember last year we had to make that judgment later just because the schools closed, you know, in March and then we made that judgment. But maybe we, maybe between us, we know enough to know which would be the more desirable window.
Well, and just as the clarification for last year as well, we offered that solely for reclassification purposes. It wasn't open to all of our English learners throughout the state.
That's right. So I personally don't feel like I have an, you know, a, a way to make the judgment about what would be more usable and useful to districts in that regard. But Member Glover Woods has an idea.
Oh, I don't know if it's an idea. It's more of a question in relation to the LPAC fall administration and the funding that would be needed for that. Was I correct in understanding earlier in the meeting that that request for funding is something that would need to go to the legislature? And if so, is that a decision that we would recommend today in light of not having a lot of information around that?
Rachel, do you, I mean, the answer is yes, we would have to go to the legislature for the funding. Do you want to add any other thoughts? I see Member Strauss has her hand up also.
I would just, I would, I would agree with that. Linda, I can, President Darlene Hammond, I would concur that the, we would have to have approval from the legislature for the funds as well as the administration, opening up the administration window.
It might be that the safest thing is to simply recommend extension through the 30th so that we know that people can use it. But Member Strauss, do you have a thought?
Well, so I, I feel like the, the priority would be to LPAC extension and extending to the 30th, really it's only two weeks. So I'm just wondering.
It's actually a longer extension for the LPAC because the LPAC otherwise closes in May. I think May 31st. And so if we went to July 30th for the LPAC, it would be a longer extension.
So, so I, I just wonder if there's a way to make the motion on the LPAC pending legislative and governor approvals so that that one, it sounds like we cannot delay if in fact we want a fall window. And I, I was, that's what I heard Rachel say, that, that. And I, I guess I just want it to be in person and I don't know that everyone's going to be back in time. So I feel like we need to extend. So I guess the question is, is it better to extend it into July and make that as a motion and then come back in March? Or May, no, you can't say, Rachel said, we have to extend for fall now if we want it. So I guess that'd be my proposal, President Darling Hammond, that, that we do, we separate out just the extension of the LPAC window.
Member Burr?
So I'm, I am so confused today. We can't, I, I sort of understand why you want it to be urgent for ETS, but if it's contingent upon the authorization of resources provided by the legislature and the governor, I'm pretty sure they're not going to do that before our March meeting. So if we're trying to figure out, do we, to, to be more comprehensive, if you will, that we both extend the window and we provide, or we provide for a fall window, I think it's worth trying to buy some time to figure out how that happens and what makes the most sense. And my, my other point of confusion is whether or not this extension is related to a federal waiver or this is something that we think is a good thing to do just for purposes of test administration and for services to English learners.
You know, it is mentioned in the federal letter, but I think that it is actually a state decision. We do not need federal approval or permission to extend that window as far as I know. But I'm going to punt that back to Rachel to clarify.
For, for this piece, I'll ask Dr. Bang if she would be able to provide some clarification as far as what the requirements are for the extension of the LPAC.
So if there is a, if we want to extend it, we are taking emergency regulations to the March board meeting so that we can extend it, extend through our emergency regs process. And that may, we were anticipating there may be some interest in that. And that is why we worked through that process. So through our emergency regs, we could extend it.
The, the mention of this in the federal letter was because English learner assessments are typically on an earlier timeframe than other assessments, which is true in our state as well. And people across the country were beginning to bring English learners back for assessments when schools were not safe to be open in person. And there was actually some litigation brought by the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights against about eight of the states saying, don't bring English learners back in the pandemic to, you know, when the schools aren't safe to be open for testing because of that earlier window. So there's encouragement in the letter to extend the window for English learners where it is earlier than others, which it was also for California. We were, you know, to finish that by May 31st as opposed to by July 15th, which is, or the close of school, whichever comes sooner, which is our other date for assessment closures. So one way to be sure that we are signaling, taking more time to get to English learners would be to simply extend the date now through July 30th, which adds two full months to what districts would otherwise be thinking they needed to do. Because anything else we do is contingent on the legislature, it's contingent on emergency regulations and we might make a decision today to do something that proves impossible to do and we will not have extended the timeline meanwhile to meet the need that was originally identified. Brooks is raising his hand.
Yeah, I believe General Counsel Seis has some feedback as well.
Yes, so if we wanted to, we do not need a federal waiver to extend the testing window for LPAC this year. As Mao said, we would need to change regulations and we could do that at the March, at the March meeting. However, if we wanted to do a fall testing window for LPAC, we would need a federal waiver plus we would need state law change because we would not be administering the LPAC in this current school year.
The other problem we would have is that, just as we heard for fall testing otherwise, students will have changed schools. Sometimes they will have changed districts because they've gone from an elementary district to a, you know, a high school district. You know, there are all the record keeping problems associated with that. So the intention of it is a very good intention and we did it as Rachel reminded us for reclassification this year. But it is a complicated thing to do. And if it, if people don't know whether it will be approved in time to shift their plans, they may still feel the urgency of, of testing English learners earlier than they would otherwise have to plan for if we were to extend at least through July 30th. Which to me seems like maybe the safer thing to do. Leaving it alone does leave, leave people in the situation where they feel they need to bring kids in in some cases for testing because we've seen the problems of remote testing of English learners in some districts already. Member Navo, did you want to weigh in?
Oh, I was and then, then I decided I wasn't and so now I will.
Why, you should. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering why there wasn't any reason we just couldn't make it, make both of those July 30th, 2021 and, and leave the rest out. And should the extent that we need to revisit this in March, we can. But for now, giving the field some direction that at least minimally speaking, you have until July 30th to finish your LPAC, which seems to be the, the least complicated and requires the least a number of hoops to jump through as a state.
Yeah. And just to clarify, we can't, the contractor can't boot up again for a fall administration easily if we've gone to July 30th. But it is the thing that probably sends the most clear signal to the field in the moment to begin to reduce some of the, you know, ambiguity that, that people are experiencing. Matt, would you like to make a motion on, on that?
Sure. To the extent that there's, there's no other conversation, I, I would make the motion.
We could take more conversation after we have a motion.
Sure. That we extend the 2020-21 test administration window for both CASP and LPAC to July 30th, 2021.
While you were gone, there was more conversation about CASP. I guess we could also add the word whether, you know, we would be, some people want to revisit the question about CASP. So we could say as appropriate.
Yes.
Or what was it, what we said?
As applicable.
As applicable.
Yes. That makes sense to me.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Is there further discussion of the motion? All right. Brooks, can you call the roll?
Member Burr.
No.
President Darlene Hammond.
Yes.
Member Pata.
Yes.
Member Glover Woods.
No.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Navo.
Yes.
Member Patio Brownson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Rucker.
Um, not voting.
Vice President Strauss.
Yes.
Member Sun.
I, I wish we had just addressed only the LPAC. I'm sorry, because the CASP is what's keeping me.
It was added as applicable, so if we're not going to have the CASP, it won't be applicable.
Okay, then yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. Just try to work our way through and then we'll come to the big buckets. The third one was motion three, direct CDE to prepare a general waiver of this California Science Test for the school year per the rationale that Member Strauss provided earlier. Is there further discussion of that motion or do I have a motion to use? Member Strauss, do you want to remove that? Re hyphen move that?
So motion three directs CDE to prepare a general waiver of the California Science Test for the 2021 school year.
I second.
Right. So we have a motion. Second, is there further discussion of that motion? All right, we'll call the roll.
Member Burr.
Aye.
President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Pata.
Aye.
Member Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Navo.
Aye.
Member Patio Brownson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Rucker.
Yes.
Vice President Strauss.
Yes.
Member Sun.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So now we get to the fun part, part we've all been waiting for, which is I think what we sorted out were the various possible ways that one could address the remainder of the testing question. One is to request a blanket waiver. One is to do the best you can and it's to ask people to use the state summative assessments that remain after the science is removed. Do the best you can when you're back in person and those students who, you know, that we have already put a parameter saying you need to be back in person, need to be back in person for a number of weeks for kids to be back and then to do as much assessment as is practicable in that period of time. And there will just be something less than a 95% participation rate likely. That's the strategy that Rachel described other states using and it is consonant with what I've heard in some places. A third is to have the state assessment with a decision rule for flexibilities. For, as Member Rucker said, if there's some objective criterion that one would use to then look at other ways to provide data where in-person instruction is not happening and safe and appropriate for the use of the state summative tests. And then the fourth would be to try to see whether we can come back to this question in March. And I think that is based on whether we, you know, feel the, feel need some, some additional indications today to be able to figure out how to proceed. Let me pause there and say, under the blanket waiver, that would also, I think, cover the question that some people have raised about just letting everyone use whatever it is that they've got. I mean, that's essentially, you know, one of the ways that one could write for a a different kind of waiver. So first, let me see if anybody sees any other possibilities that I have not named so that we can then take them in an orderly way and just think through the different components. And I will say that, you know, there are, there were a few states that had asked for blanket waivers. Most of them are now reconciled. reconsidering within the parameters of the guidance that's come out, but there may be, uh, you know, there may be others who do that. There, um, is, uh, at, at least one state that wrote, wrote a waiver that would, uh, require local assessments. So that's that bucket. Um, most states are in the category of do the best you can when you're back in person, and some are doing the version of we're going to offer the statewide assessment. We're also going to work with districts that cannot give that assessment to be sure that there is some assessment data that is made available. So all of these represent, you know, realities in the field in one way or another. Uh, some of them much more common than others. I think the first thing I want to ask, though, of, of our staff is, uh, because I think we need, we have not talked about this. If we were to ask for a blanket waiver, what are the penalties that we would be facing if, as is presumed, it would be likely denied?
So my understanding, um, is that in statute, the requirement for assessments is tied to our federal funding. So that, that is a possibility that the, um, that ED could choose to withhold any or all of our federal funds.
We've got, uh, a hand up from Member Burr.
I, I just want to clarify what the penalty. My understanding is that the, the first step that the feds would take would be to, um, try to limit our administrative funds, meaning the funds that go primarily to the Department of Education for, um, for their work, not that that's miniscule, but it's not, but they typically have not in the past, even though sometimes they try to threaten it, uh, take away money from kids. They don't take away the money that goes directly to LEAs. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to clarify that, um, Member Burr. And, and this is my understanding. I, I believe you may have participated in this, so if, if you have a different understanding, let me know. Um, but my understanding was, um, that first there was the, the statement that they would withhold our federal funds, um, targeting specifically Title I during that time. And then through, uh, multiple negotiations and discussions, it was brought down to just our administrative funds. And they did end up withholding some of that.
Yeah, they withheld funds from two states, California and Idaho, uh, in, in the past. Uh, I think by law, they could withhold all of our federal funds. I think it, you know, uh, became a negotiation or something at, at some point in time. Uh, Member Rucker.
Um, so I was going to also weigh in on that same discussion. I think that, um, in looking at and talking about this, I, I don't think we need to talk, speak to this in absolute terms. While the waiver contemplates a way for us to do the assessment in a way that would collect statewide data, let me suggest that we parse that requirement to say we have a way to ensure that statewide there will be a uniform type of data collection from all of the districts, but it doesn't, it won't necessarily be based on the use of a statewide assessment. So if we are uniformly requiring all districts to collect and publicly report information about the progress of students on academic growth on English, Language Arts, and Math, but they're using local assessments, we are still requiring a statewide data collection. And we are requiring that be done in a uniform and timely way. We're just not going to use the state assessment to do it. It relieves us of the burden of trying to figure out how to administer a state assessment and allows us to give districts the local flexibility in the context of what's going on in the health pandemic issue to use the local assessment and local assessment practices that's all, that they are already doing. The letter does give us that flexibility to make that case, and that would be the recommendation I would suggest we look at.
And in your version, Member Rucker, it doesn't give us the, uh, flexibility upfront. It gives us the, as you said, the opportunity to make the case. Um, in case, but they're clear, in cases where there are unusual circumstances is the way.
Right, and we're not making up the unusual. The unusual circumstances are not something that we, as the state board, have made up. This is work that's already been undertaken by multiple stakeholder policy groups in the health community to set a uniform standard for defining these conditions. So it's not even going to be conditions that change from location to location. It's a uniform set of criteria that's already in place.
And in your version of this, Member Rucker, would the state be offering the statewide assessment for those who found that to be the best way to proceed and, and, uh, accepting other, just other assessments where they can meet the standards that you laid out from other districts?
I think that, I, 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 I am open to suggesting that, but I think that might be a difficulty for the feds, because what they will see is two different types of blocks of assessment data.
There would be different blocks of assessment data if we used, um...
I think if the, I think if the point the feds want to make is that we're making publicly accessible information about the, uh, about the progress that students are making, and we're saying we're going to do this in a uniform way across the state, I think we're still meeting the intent of preparing a statewide report, because districts would be reporting the same kind of data in a uniform way that we define for them.
If they haven't already chosen something that allows for that and administered it, there would need to be a default.
Well, I don't see how they wouldn't, since, I, I don't see how they wouldn't have done that, since it's a requirement for both for the LCAP and the Learning Continuity Plans that already requires it. And I know charter schools are already doing it, because we identified those 11 alt, uh, assessments that they can use for that purpose. So I, I would be surprised to know, based on the requirement to approve the Learning Continuity Plans last fall, that there wouldn't be a district that doesn't already have that.
I'm just suggesting that we don't know for sure, and we don't know what they will allow in terms of reporting fully. So you might need a default in that, in that version. Uh, I'm going to go to Member Glover Woods, and then we'll, um, discuss some of the others. Member Glover Woods?
Thank you. I just had a question, um, regarding the timeline. We, if we were to pursue a waiver of, um, any sort, be it blanket or similar to what, um, Member Rucker suggested, could you remind me again, um, Rachel, what is kind of the expected timeline that we would receive a response from ED on whether that waiver is allowed or accepted or approved?
From my, my understanding from, um, previous practice, when we've submitted things like this, is that it takes quite some time.
Okay, so in, in, in light of that, we'll say quite some time, would that then mean if the waiver is not approved, then we are still, um, required to either, um, administer the state assessment or make a choice not to administer the state assessment and take the consequences that would come from not adhering to that?
Uh, and, uh, I will let, um, Judy Seis jump in on this too, if I'm incorrect. But my understanding is that until, um, we have an approved waiver, we would need to continue to move forward to meet the obligations laid out under ESSA.
Okay.
And our state.
That, that helps to.
So we would be obligated to continue to be assessing.
Okay, thank you. That helps to clarify. Thank you.
I'm looking to see if there's another, another hand up. I, I don't have the federal letter in front of me, which I wanted to get, uh, but there's a, um, I'm going to try to get that. There's a, um, statement about the fact that these additional flexibilities that Member Rucker was referring to are in addition to, um, not necessarily in lieu of the flexibilities around giving the State Summit of Assessment. So I, I thought originally, Member Rucker, what you were proposing was that for places that, in, you know, are not able to give the State Summit of Assessment, that there would be an objective criterion, uh, that then leads to the pursuit of those flexibilities.
Okay, so I'm reading directly from the letter itself.
Thank you.
And for staff, it's, uh, the paragraph I'm looking at is at the bottom of page two of three. So forgive me for reading this aloud to everyone. It says, "The intent of these flexibilities and the accountability waivers described above is to focus on assessments to provide information to parents, educators, and the public about student performance, and to help target resources and support." And I'm going to read that again. "To focus on assessments to provide information to parents. For that reason, we are not inviting blanket waivers of assessments. We also recognize that individual states may need additional assessment flexibility based on the specific circumstances, and these are the two propositions, across or within the state, and we will work with states to address their individual needs and conditions while ensuring the maximum available statewide data to inform the targeting of resources and supports." So if their primary interest is to focus on assessments to inform, to provide information to parents, educators, and the public about student performance, that doesn't necessarily mean we are only limited to the CASP or in addition to the CASP. It says the assessments that will do, that perform a specific service on providing information. And it says within or across the state.
So I think that one way to consider the options is, you know, on the one hand, um, a blanket waiver would say there's no assessment obligation whatsoever. On the other hand, one would say there is an assessment obligation. We need to figure out what that assessment obligation is that, you know, might include the CASP, might include other assessments that are more, uh, available and readily used. Um, so maybe we need to start with that. I've mostly heard members of the board speaking to how do we, uh, enact the assessment obligation rather than avoid any assessment obligation? But if we can see whether we have a majority on one side or the other of that, then we could burrow in to the question of how would we, um, pursue, uh, the flexibilities, uh, in assessments if in fact that's what we're, um, agreed we want to do? Um, so the, the question really is, um, uh, one of, uh, maybe I can just ask for a sort of a show of hands. Um, how many people would, uh, like to see, um, assessments of some sort occur such that parents and the public have data? Um, and then we could work out what's plausible and, and, uh, reasonable?
Excuse me, um, President Darlin Hammond, I, I don't think we can do a straw poll, so... Please, we, we need to call the question and do a roll call.
Okay, all right. So, um, I, I did get a glimpse of the answer, but we'll, we'll do a little motion. Uh, uh, shall I just try to state it? Or could somebody else formulate it?
It's being typed on the screen.
I, I didn't hear what it was to type, so if someone could...
I'll try to state it again, and I'll, I guess I'll, I'll move it. That, uh, California, um, create a means, a policy means to provide assessment information uh, this school year to parents and the public. The specifics of which we will then, you know, further deliberate. I don't know if you have to put that last part, that was... Because then, then we know whether we're talking about a waiver that asks for certain kinds of flexibilities of assessment or a waiver that asks for no assessment. So at least we can boil ourselves down to one of those buckets. So that's the intention. Judy, were you going to say something? Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Can I ask that we, um, also include disaggregated information?
Well, if we, if we end up in that bucket, then we can figure out what it, that bucket is. But first we have to figure out if we're in that bucket, all right? Um, I, I take your point. Uh, Member Burr?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, um, clarify. I think it would be, be important for us to be clear about what our context is. And I think, or Member Rucker's been talking about this, and others may have while I was off, so I apologize if I missed it. We, in the state, as I understand it, early on in the pandemic, beginning last fall, said, or last spring, you don't have to do an LCAP, because we know that's a big burden, but you have to do a Learning Continuity Plan. And in that Learning Continuity Plan, every LEA has to identify what assessments they're using locally to make sure they know how their students are doing.
Uh huh.
I just hope our conversation is kind of nested in what we've already required. And I, I, like you, Linda, I'm not 100% sure, or even 50% sure that all LEAs complied with that, although we have a mechanism by which the counties were supposed to approve it, et cetera. So for me, I'd like to do more, um, digging around that and have more information to say what's really out there and what is available and what's available to make, and, and what would we want? And how would that be reported to the public? Because I agree with you, we're all, I agree with your intent. I guess what I want to make sure is, is we're nesting it in what we've already asked LEAs to do.
Exactly. Well, that's, that's why I framed it that way. That we, we do know there's a lot of assessment data that has been collected.
Okay.
We do know there are some people who are already giving the state tests. We do know that there are, uh, lots of barriers for everyone to do that. Uh, and we've got, you know, to figure out. But, uh, that would, that would then shape the next conversation. So, um, any further discussion?
So the purpose of this motion is to really take the temperature of the pa, of the board to see if they're willing to look at an alternative to trying to focus on just the statewide reporting and look at an optional. I mean, that's basically the intent of this motion, and we would...
Right, it's to, it's to...
Right.
To figure out whether we're having a conversation about what are the flexibilities in assessments.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion of the motion? All in favor or no? If we get a roll call vote. Bro, Brooks?
Yes, Member Burr.
Aye.
President Darlin Hammond.
Aye.
Member Fatah.
Aye.
Member Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Navo.
Aye.
Member Patil Brownson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Rucker.
Yes.
Vice President Strauss.
Yes.
Member Sun.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now we know what bucket we're in, what, what lake we're swimming in. Um, and then I think the question that we, you know, we have been trying to figure our way through is the question of, uh, is there a role for, uh, state assessments in this framework? Is there a State Summit of Assessments? Is there a role for local, uh, locally selected according to our continuity, instructional continuity plans or other? Because assessments in some localities go beyond what they might have put in that report. Um, you know, so we don't want to necessarily limit the possible options. Um, that, uh, would be a useful and fair way of ensuring that, uh, the progress of students is being, uh, assessed against our state standards, uh, reported to, uh, at minimum, parents and educators, um, and potentially to the, the public at some level of aggregation. Uh, potentially, uh, to Member Sun's point, also disaggregated by subgroups, which I think, you know, wherever people are doing, uh, blanket assessments is possible to do, because they have identifiers in the state student database. So that's the, that's the bucket we're going to work on now. And Member Rucker, you want to kick us off?
Sure, um, when I, when we started this whole conversation this morning, you know, I remarked and observed on the fact that the NAEP assessment itself was canceled altogether by the U.S. Department of Education, and they have never changed their mind on doing that. The NAEP assessment actually creates the kind of statewide reporting and the type of disaggregated data that we are struggling with trying to figure out how to address under the requirements of this waiver. And so while the feds have relieved themselves of the burden of trying to figure out how to do virtual and remote assessments in the pandemic, the burden remains here on the state to try to figure out the same. the burden remains here on the state to try and figure out the same thing. And it is a burden for us because at this exact moment, 52 of 58 counties are in that purple designation. That's not my designation. Now, you know, there are moments when I have these fantasies that if I were in charge of the world, and then I have to pause and enjoy that, and then keep moving on. But this was a uniform set of criteria that was made to evaluate the circumstances that the pandemic has created. So the first piece of this, as it relates to looking at how to make this case in this waiver, is to explain that, how the circumstances are different and how they have been established and created, looking at the impact of the pandemic. So that's the first piece of making this case. The second piece is clearly spelled out in the letter, and I don't want to read it to you again. But if the focus is to look at the types of assessments that will provide information to parents, educators, and the public, districts have been given that flexibility in those learning continuity plans. My assumption, at the time when the bill that created the learning continuity plans was established, was it was a mandate, and that county offices had the responsibility to ensure that these plans would be in place. If they are not in place, creating this waiver and doing this proposal would require us to make sure we know what districts have or have not done this. But we are giving then to districts and passing on to them the responsibility to understand first, there's a requirement to do assessing. There's a requirement to understand the status and the progress that their students are making. There's a requirement to report it publicly. And there will be a requirement for the state to be able to have access to the assessment information they choose. What that assessment information can be could simply be those local assessments that are already identifying in those learning continuity plans, or those assessments already identified by charter schools because we have already identified valid and reliable alternative assessments to be used. It could be the dyslexia assessments that the state has identified for teachers in grades kindergarten through second grade to look at reading language arts progress as well. But the fact of the matter is, we've done that work. We've identified as a state board, what are the valid and reliable assessments that can be used? And it doesn't have to take the assessment provided by the state off the table because we already know there are 79 LEAs where that work is already underway. So this gives us not only the broadest flexibility to work in our local context, but also the broadest flexibility for local districts to make the decision, what is the best assessment program for them to use going forward if we can make the case through this waiver?
Others? Member Burr, did your hand go up and down?
I had it up, and I was slow in taking it down. But I'll take the opportunity. I guess I do, I certainly am in favor of trying to use the local assessments as much as possible. But I'm also willing to consider the idea of, I think what we talked about, sort of decision rules of, if schools, if we set as specific conditions that schools have to be back in place under our health guidelines, not that they're bringing people back just to test. They have, they've provided instruction for some minimal amount of time. I think I heard you say the expert advice was four weeks. And if the assessments, if the state assessment can be made in such a way that it is comparable across all school settings, because I think what we heard before was, when we were talking about a different approach, was that there would be some districts that are back, are giving, then others that are not. And I think it makes the information kind of meaningless if you can't really compare it and aggregate it, if that's what we're really trying to do. So I think if we think carefully, and again, I'm not sure we're ready to do that on the fly. So I'm like ticking them off in my head, and we might need some more time. But I think it is, it's worth considering. And again, I just want to restate, I don't want to get in a fight with the feds. In 2013, I really wanted to fight with the feds. I do not today. But I do, so I think we can put our best foot forward. And to the language that Member Rucker has repeated a couple of times, I do think they're inviting that. They're inviting us to say, here are our unique settings, and here's what's happened in our state. We understand what your intent is, and we share your intent. We want to make sure that we know how our children are doing and how we best can improve. But the circumstances are such that they haven't been in 100 years, literally. And we're trying to survive that. And we're trying to make sure that LEAs are doing the best they can on behalf of their kids. So it's not a case of put this in their face and say, too bad, we don't like what you came up with. It's we understand you're giving us the opportunity. And I just, I wanted to ask you, Linda, because I saw an Oregon document weeks ago about sort of an approach they were taking. And I thought that was their approach of saying, we understand, even this was before the guidance, we understand what you want, and we want the same thing. But given our local circumstances, here's what we can do. Here's a strategic piece with respect to our state assessment, and here's what we can do with respect to local assessments. And that's kind of what I'm hoping we can get to. So we're responsive to what our LEAs told us, loud and clear, in my view, in letters and in their oral testimony. But we're also responsible for providing data to everybody to let them know where we are. But in a responsible way that recognizes the individual circumstances.
Yeah, and I think that what Oregon did propose to do is very similar to what we're talking about. That is to, well, what we have been, in various ways, talking about, which is to use the state assessment where it's usable and useful, and then to have alternatives such that every student is assessed and parents are informed. The question about aggregation is, you know, one of the questions. If we want to be able to aggregate all of those data in some unidimensional way across the state, that's not possible to do. You can do some equating of tests and things, you know, like SAT and ACT. But if the main goal is to be able to aggregate, the statewide summit of assessment is the way, you know, statewide assessment is the only way to be able to aggregate meaningfully across the state. But we know that that's not going to be available for everyone.
I need to point out, I need to point out, that's not what this letter says.
I'm not saying it does. I'm just trying to, there were other questions about aggregation that came up. And so I'm just trying to answer those questions. That, but, you know, the assessments that districts had to choose in the fall are aggregable, at least to the district level. And in some cases, they're aggregable across districts because we had a limited number that people could choose, and many people chose the same ones. So again, depending on, you know, all of the purposes one has for assessment, which include primarily guiding teaching and learning for individual children, and making sure that we are focusing on what they know and helping them learn the next thing, and informing parents and teachers to support that. But then above that, the questions of aggregation and disaggregation lead you to different parameters for what we would want to consider. So I just wanted to have that set of ideas on the table. Member Sun and then Member Navo.
Thank you. So springing off of what Member Rucker and Member Burr had already said. So, you know, I buy into what Member Rucker has, the dotted line she has drawn between the intent of the federal letter and some of the wording within the federal letter. And I think we could make a good case. If we are to replace, if you will, or in lieu of, the statewide assessment for the local assessments that is already being given out, then I think we would need to make a strong case for how these local assessments can, as much as possible, meet the state assessments. And we did this work, yes, with verified data for charter schools and setting those very clear parameters. I'm not sure that currently those assessments are being given under those same requirements that we're requiring of charters right now. So that would be something we need to put in place. And to Member Burr's point, I don't think we really kind of thought through all of that and that this will require an additional conversation to make sure that the data is, that the assessments are given to a broad number of students, including our special ed students and our EL students, that they're, that they are consistently given according to what the testing requirements are for those assessments. You know, all those things that we're saying charter schools have to follow, we really need to be, we need to make, put that in place.
Member Navo.
Yeah, Rachel, I have a question. I may be thinking about this too simply.
I meant to go back to Rachel, so I'm glad you're directing. Rachel, roll in any of the other questions you were prepared to answer when you answered Member Navo's question.
I can wait, Rachel, if you want to respond.
I was just going to provide a little bit of clarification on the learning continuity plans that might be helpful to the conversation. And I think it goes along with what you're bringing up, Member Sun. The first clarification is just that county offices were not required to approve the learning continuity plans. They are required to approve LCAPs. But for this year, underneath SB 98, all they were required to receive them. They could provide feedback if they would like, but there was no requirement to do so. So just that piece of clarification. The other piece that I think is important to keep in mind with that while the learning continuity plan did ask for data and how districts or LEAs plan to monitor progress, it did not require that they use anything that had been previously state-adopted, was valid and reliable, aligned to California content standards. It wasn't required that it be across a district or school site, or even within a grade level. So I think those are just important pieces for clarification as you're talking through the learning continuity plan requirements. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Member Navo, do you want to ask your question?
Sure, just a couple of clarifying questions. I'm not familiar, obviously, with the federal waiver process, Rachel, so maybe I'm thinking about it too simplicity, too simple. If we apply for a waiver from federal assessments and it's approved, then we would lose funding, correct? We don't lose funding just because we're asking for it, only if it's approved.
If it's disapproved.
Right, 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 right.
My assumption is that if it is denied, and then we are unable to meet the requirements of the law.
Okay. So in the request, is it unreasonable to make two considerations? One, attending to the thoughts and points that my fellow board members have already made regarding the complexities of the state of California in relationship to the reality that most of our kids have been out of school for quite considerably longer than many other states. And we're quite larger, generally speaking, than any other state. And so there's unique circumstances related to California that complicate our ability to get students back on campus. And so could we make the consideration that, yes, we would like a waiver from the federal obligation of assessments? We have a Plan B for local assessments. It's probably imperfect, but it's, we do have a system. And the second consideration is if that is not an option, then we have, we will adhere to the state assessment with the request for federal flexibilities. So couldn't, is it unreasonable, I guess, to put two options in the waiver for the feds to consider? Because what I'm thinking about, if I'm a local and I'm listening to this conversation, and we go for a request for a waiver, I have to bank that we get the waiver, not knowing what the other outcome is. But if I know what the rules are, if I know, okay, we're going to apply for a waiver, we are probably likely not going to get it. And the other rule of the game is I can start my testing now, or I can push it off. But the end of the line for testing is July 30th. Then I, as a local educational agency, can make the decision. I either hope that we get the waiver, and I hedge my bets longer, waiting for students to get back on campus, or I start now. But those that have started know that they're going to, their test will be validated. Those that have not started have an option to start with the idea that if they wait too long, they're going to put themselves up against the wall. Because what I heard you say was, we don't know when we'll get this, we don't know when we'll get an answer from them. It's considerably long.
Yeah, and I would just note that there's the general treatment of a blanket waiver request, which can take a very long time, and the language in this letter, which I think suggests that they're going to try to work much more iteratively with states in this moment. But there would still be some delay. We don't, I don't think it would necessarily be the same delay that we would have if we put in for a general waiver.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay. Well, that makes, that's a little bit better. I just think that, I guess I'm struggling with the idea that we have to just say it's A or B. Can we say we'd like, we would prefer A, and if not, we would like B?
The only thing I would clarify that, and again, I would invite Judy to share if I'm incorrect, because I'm not a lawyer. As I had shared before, until we have an approval of the waiver, we would need to continue to move forward under what the law requires.
One thing we might consider doing is asking our state board executive director and CDE leadership staff to, within some parameters that we articulate, to come up with what the content of those flexibilities might be. We've begun to, you know, think through what some of those might be. And then to take Member Burr's suggestion, come back in, either on March 17th at our next board meeting, or at a meeting that is called earlier than that, to lay out what those flexibilities would be, or what those strategies for assessment would be. In the interim, as you just said, Member Navo, if districts are in a position and want to just continue to do the assessments that are available to them, that's something they can do, rather than banking on what's going to come out at the other end. Member Glover Woods is next.
Thank you. I have to share, I'm concerned about time. Only because as we consider options and flexibilities or wait for feedback on what those flexibilities are, in the field, they need to be able to make decisions. And I know that some of that's already been said. If I'm understanding our conversation correctly, it seems that what is kind of being proposed is, if you want to move forward with administering the statewide assessment, and it's safe to be able to do so in an in-person setting, go forward and do that. If you have a situation where that's not safe to do, you would not administer the statewide assessment. However, you should use local data in order to be able to communicate to parents and educators and whatnot. That's kind of what I'm hearing, and I guess I'll kind of echo a statement that's been made a few times in the meeting. I'm starting to get a little confused on where we are. And I know there's a lot of work being done to try to simplify it. So let me try to ask my question more direct. If we were to consider allowing those LEAs that wanted to administer the statewide assessment, and it's safe for them to be able to do so, are we able to allow for those who are unable to do it, and it's not ever safe to do so, to use local assessments? So that's my first question. And then my second question would be, if that was an option, does it require, does it still require that a statewide assessment to be written into the waiver? Or do we need to get permission to even do that?
I don't think we need permission to do that. I'm moving to where I have better Wi-Fi, because I think maybe my Wi-Fi is the problem right now. We, but we would need to figure out what our waiver is, you know, ultimately. I think the way you stated it is potentially accurate. One of the things that the department has volunteered to do is to work with us on what those flexibilities might be. So we could say today that we're going to figure out those flexibilities within the parameters. Does somebody have a... Does somebody have a guitar on?
Muted.
Linda, if you just pause a minute, it appears there's a problem with the phone. They're trying to fix it. Meanwhile, everyone can enjoy this peaceful musical interlude during this discussion.
It, it signals that we are finding harmony.
Exactly.
We're almost there.
Just have to get in tune, we'll be fine.
Could have been much worse, you know, in terms of the music that selected.
Okay, we're assured they're working on it, it should be any minute.
Okay, I like it. Somebody felt that we needed to chill out, and they're, they're helping us do that. I won't try to talk through it, but I will just say I see hands from Member Glover Woods, Member Strauss, and Member Becker, which we'll get to in a moment. All right, that was a nice interlude. So I was just responding to say, yes, I think that frankly, the way you framed it, Member Glover Woods, is, is potentially accurate for one path, which would be to say, we're going to work out, and I would, I would recommend that we consider asking the staff of CDE and our State Board Executive Director to work out the, a, a, an approach within parameters that we would set. They've been invited by the Department of Education to, as the letter states, to work through flexibilities, and they could begin that process. And then we could bring it back as quickly as possible, but no later than March 17th, for a vote on something that's very, much more defined. But that would, you know, ensure that we have an expectation for assessment and the reporting of results to parents and educators, et cetera. So I think that, that does, you know, in the next couple of weeks, that would mean that people who wanted to proceed with the state assessments could do so. Those, you know, in terms of local, locally selected assessments, they're usually not local assessments per se. They're usually national tests that have been locally selected. People are already using them and already have data. So it doesn't create a new requirement for them to do something in the next two weeks. You know, if, if, because they've, it, it appears from the data we've gotten from the survey that most districts are already using those assessments. So it doesn't necessarily propose a new obligation on them in the short run. But that would give us a chance to also get clearer about what data are available, get clearer about the context for giving the statewide assessments, which some people may choose to take the options to shorten them, you know, further, et cetera, get the parameters, the criteria in, in a place where we can vote on it. Member Strauss, you're next in line.
Yeah, so I want to follow up on what Member Glover Woods said, and what you, President Darling Hammond said. I would like to be able to give direction to LEAs today, which says, "The State Board does not expect you to administer state assessments in a remote setting." That we understand that students need to be back in school in a safe way for three to four weeks before the assessment would be given. So that would tell people who haven't opened yet, like, you don't have to start assessing. The second thing could also be, we expect LEAs to continue with the guidance that they completed in their learning continuity plan to administer local assessments and provide feedback. So we at least tell people, you're supposed to keep doing those learning continuity assessments, and we don't want you to administer in a remote setting. We want you back in school first. So that would at least tell people, because I think districts were trying to figure out how to do it remotely, because we have so many not back yet. So I'm just wondering if that's a tweener that we could, while we're working on the other options, to say, we want students back before the state assessment is given in person.
I, I think that, just to be clear, the other assessments that people can use and have used are often also delivered online. They do not require, they typically do not require secure browsers, which we heard vividly illustrated by Member Fatah, you know, in terms of what the challenges are with that. They are not high stakes, and so they don't, they often don't take as much time. They don't have quite always the bandwidth issues, but they could still have issues. So I don't know that we can, we can assume that people can just, you know, if they're having challenges giving those, they, they may also have to wait on some of that until there is more bandwidth. But I think the point that you're making, that we expect people not to do, you know, assess kids in ways that are untenable or unsafe, is the, a good point to be making, and that we do expect that in this school year, districts will find ways to assess all students, and that those who can move ahead with assessments that they are doing, or with the state assessments that are now coming online as of this week, are welcome to do so, but are not required to do so till it is safe and tenable. Does that, does that capture the intent of your thinking?
Yeah, I, I think just to reinforce that we understand that it, it, something about, the same thing that the federal guidance letter said, that student, that we, I guess the main message.
You just should not be brought back to school in person just for the purpose of testing.
And that remote assessment isn't, that we expect state assessments to be given once students are back in a safe environment for several weeks before it is administered.
I think that's, I think that's fine. I think there are some places that are, have been able to do remote administration of different things successfully. I don't think we want to cut off the opportunity for people who are successfully doing that, but we certainly don't want to put other districts and schools in a situation where they're unable to make assessment a thoughtful, well-supported process. And if it's in person, after kids have been back long enough to have adjusted and had, you know, all of the other social emotional supports that they need to be attaching back to school. I think we've got, Member Rucker, is there any other member who wants to be recognized, so that we can be sure we can move forward and wrap this up? Member Rucker.
Okay, so to the point that I believe we're beginning to come to some consonance on, you know, when, in reading the, my first reaction when I read the guidance letter on Monday afternoon was, you know, this, this voice, my mother's voice in the back of my head. You know, the last thing I want to do is hurt you, but it's still on my list. And so the state is, the feds are trying to give states a way to figure out how to deal with what is a very difficult set of circumstances. And so I think there's a need in contemplating the way we phrase this motion to separate intent from action or activity. The motion that we need to try to craft right now in giving guidance to the CDE staff is to craft our intent to help, to help us develop a proposal that clearly states our intent to make sure we create assessment practices as a response to the waiver guidance that will assure public reporting of student assessments with, about progress on English Language Arts and Mathematics. So that that public reporting is done in a uniform way, and based on uniform activities and, but local options. So that's the intent. The activities, as specified and looked at more, with greater particularity by Board Member Glover Woods and even Board Member Burr, about whether we're talking about state assessments or a collection of locally approved assessments, or even as the staff has pointed out, whether or not districts are even using them, those are the activities that we would craft in our own guidance to the districts if this waiver is approved. So the particularity of what we're trying to do with the district, with the state and the feds to express our intent to address that flexibility they're saying we can have is one thing. And then as Board Member Strauss said, what we turn around and say to the state, the districts in our state is something else. Because what districts are still going to hear is that you're still going to need to do assessments? There is still an accountability activity called reporting that you still need to do. But what the important part is, it doesn't have high stakes. That's going to be the outcome of this waiver if we get it. We're still going to be doing assessing, we're still going to be doing reporting, but we have decoupled the stakes that comes with the high stakes assessment. So with the collection of what, of motions that we've made in trying to craft this proposal, those are the three big takeaways that need to be clearly communicated with districts. And again, when I finally read that letter, what the districts are going to see is, well, if the shoe fits, it's ugly, because we're still going to have to test. But that's what the three big takeaways in the packet of what we're trying to cobble together for this waiver should be able to, to create. Please don't ask me to try to put that in a motion, because otherwise I'll just say, we want to assess, we want to report, and take away the high stakes, and that's my motion. So if somebody wants to accept it that way, I'm happy to offer it. But President Darling Hammond is probably far better at explaining those three points for our motion.
Do you want to clarify again what you see as three points? I'm not sure I got exactly the three right bullets.
Okay, so with all of the motions that we have put together, our goal is to cobble together a proposal in, and, and to give the CDE staff guidance to cobble together a waiver proposal that focuses on creating an option for assessment that focuses on providing data to the public about the progress of students on, on assessments in English Language Arts and Mathematics. We have already passed a motion to delink the high stakes in accountability and high stakes testing by delinking the record, reporting requirement or the labeling of schools. So we're going to still test, but we have removed the high stakes, and then we're going to look at how to do the reporting, what kind of assessments we report, and how the reporting is done. That is the third piece that we would ask for flexibility to be able to do. So we're moving away from statewide aggregate reporting, because that is not what the letter clearly requires, to requiring statewide reporting in a uniform way based on the guidance we'd be allowed to create. So those would be the three parts.
And we, I don't know that we need a motion with that second part, because we already passed those motions that departed from accountability.
Right.
Now, what I hear you saying is that we would move to ask the State Board staff and the CDE staff to develop a proposal, or it may be a set of proposals, that will provide assessment, ensure that we can provide assessment data to parents and the public in ELA and math, and that will propose a means for aggregated reporting of those data.
Yeah, uniform reporting, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're aggregating it as a statewide.
Right, I, I, I get that, I think they've heard that part, but I'm just trying to get a clean motion here.
Yes, yeah, but aggregate is a, is a specific term of art, so we can avoid that. Yeah.
Aggregate, well, I think of what we earlier heard, is we, we want to be, we want a proposal about how the data could be aggregated, and how it could be disaggregated by student group. So we don't need to sit here today and figure out exactly what that is. We will ask the staff to come back to us with that as quickly as possible, and no later than March 17. Is that, so I'm seeing something go up on the screen. My eyes are not good enough to track all of this. We're about to have a written version of this. Does that work? And that will propose a means for aggregated, yeah, uniform is fine, uniform reporting of that data in both aggregated and disaggregated form. Just to get both of those terms in there. And we'll see what the proposal can be once we've got the additional data.
And at some point after this, they'll send us a copy of that motion, so we have a printed copy of what we voted on?
Yes, of course.
I'm just reading again. Rather than an option for assessment, could we say that focuses on a plan for assessments? A plan for assessment? That provides data for, for assessments, I guess assessments plural, that provide data to parents, educators, and the public about the progress of students in ELA and math, and that will propose a mean for uniform reporting of that data in both aggregated and disaggregated form? I feel like doing a mic drop. That's great. I will see if somebody wants to make, Patricia, do you want to make that motion?
I will move that, I will move what's on the screen, rather than read it back again and mess it up.
All right, we're going to still have discussion. So I saw, Member Glover Woods, I saw your hand go up and down. I'll still come back around for discussion. Is there a second on the motion?
I, I will second.
Thank you. And then is there discussion of the motion? Member Glover Woods, and then I think Member Rodriguez, did you have your hand up?
You know, I was just, it was about the motion, the wordsmithing, but I'm okay, thank you.
Member Glover Woods, and then Member Burr.
So I just want to be sure that in this motion, by the use of the term assessments, meaning plural, that we are, that we are communicating that there is, let me think how to best say this, that we're communicating that LEAs may or may not have to administer the SBACK. I'm, I'm just missing a little clarity. I, I realize it's important for it to be kind of vague into how the proposal may be developed. But again, I'm wondering, are we clear enough that that is?
The intention of the conversation has been to say, what do we do in situations where there's not a path to, you know, safely and appropriately administering the SBACK? I do want to have a noun verb agreement there. It should be assessments that provide, take off that S. My old English teacher. Member Burr, before I go to Member Burr, Member Glover Woods, did you get there were questions that you might ask? You look like you might sell the right question.
I, I believe I have, because again, as I'm reading it, I, I, I believe I am. I just want to be sure that we're clearly. That we're clearly communicating that what we're looking at are options if it's, if we're unable, if the LEA is unable to administer the SBACK. That's what's being looked at.
Member Burr, and then Member Rodriguez.
Yeah, just a process question. I'm sorry, I lost connection there again for a while. Is the idea here that the staff will bring back a waiver proposal that will then vote on for March, or this?
Yes.
Is that, that's for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We, we actually referenced you while you were gone, your proposal. And what I suggest is that we would do that as soon as possible, but no later than March 17th, so that there's, you know, if, if we, you know, get all the right information sooner, we can call another meeting for that purpose. But if not, we will go by the next one. Member Rodriguez.
So I will, I will add my wordsmithing suggestion. I'm just wondering if we can say, monitor student progress? If we can add that in there? Because it's, you know, it's like, it's for the public, but as educators, we want to monitor to make sure that we can prevent downward spirals for students, so that we can intervene. can intervene. So, it's an important word for me as an educator to have monitor in there.
Why don't we just say that monitors instead of will monitor? It doesn't necessarily need to be future tense and maybe that monitors the progress.
Thank you.
Right. I feel like we need the guitar music back while we vote.
Okay, I think we need to, I think it needs to be noted that a number of friendly amendments have been made since the motion was originally introduced.
Would you like to remove it? Would you like to re hyphen move it?
Yes, I will move it again. I will move to accept the friendly amendments that the board delegate authority to the State Board of Education Executive Director in collaboration with Department of Education staff to develop a waiver proposal to bring back to the board that focuses on a plan for assessments that provide data to parents, educators and the public. And my English teacher says, which monitors the progress of students in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and that will propose a mean for uniform, a means for uniform reporting of that data in both aggregated and disaggregated forms.
Woo! Ooh, I love the friendly amendments and all the English teachers who are helping here and I will resecond the motion.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Member Rodriguez, is your hand up for a reason or it's just, okay. All right, with that, we will call the roll. Brooke, can you call the roll for a vote?
Member Burr.
Aye.
President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Fatah.
Aye.
Member Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Navo.
Aye.
Member Patillo Brownson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Rucker.
Yes.
Vice President Strauss.
Yes.
Member Sun.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
We did it.
And Brooks, you're going to email motion five to all of us, right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank, thank you all. I think we actually need to open up the floor for public comment.
Did we cover everything?
Hmm? Sorry?
Did we cover everything we needed to cover for?
We did. We, we've covered everything we need to cover on this item. We do need to open up for general public comment. Why don't I let you take a five-minute break while we get the public comment thing, or would you like to just keep going on? Let's just keep going, all right. So, we'll take up agenda item three, general public comment, which is invited on any matter that was not included in the printed agenda. We'll open the phone line for the public comment queue. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so by calling the number shown on the public comment slide. And are there any public comments?
Yes, we do have one person for public comment. Just a reminder, this is for item three, anything that was not on the agenda. We have two people in the queue. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Dina Selix. I'm a former San Francisco Unified High School ethnic lit teacher with a UCLA Masters in Education. I supplemented with primary sources to reveal America's true history through lenses of ethnic discrimination and race. If my diverse students were to be stereotypically categorized as the critical race theory does, their authentic voices would be hindered. All races and cultures are valuable to society through their contributions. The ESMC must not indoctrinate and alienate ethnic groups. Even Castles Revised Transformative Social Emotional Learning uses the CRT framework. Students learn to critically examine the root causes of inequity. Upper-income white adolescents are encouraged to take responsibility for social inequities while exhibiting racial guilt. This inhibits inclusive school communities and contradicts the SCL's goal of establishing a trusting environment and collaborative relationships. Teachers required to take CRT training will also encounter its discriminatory, age-inappropriate tenants and resources.
Thank you caller, your time, your time is up. Thank you.
Through shared struggles without the oppressors.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Joe Malvin. I teach cultural anthropology at the University of San Diego. My, I affirm what the previous caller said and would add that in terms of teaching about different cultures, which is what we're doing here in California, that we need a, an approach that promotes multiple perspectives and critical race theory actually works against the very goal that's stated in the high school social sciences framework that requires representation of multiple points of view or perspectives. So, we need to revisit that with something that's more positive and open to the variety of students and backgrounds that we have here in California. Thank you very much.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Lori Myers. I'm a California teacher who supports ethnic studies courses that address racism and teach our country's true history. According to the California Constitution, I cannot discriminate in my classroom based on my student's race. Yet that is what the ethnic studies model curriculum tells me to do with its key pedagogy, critical race theory. Critical race theory is a pedagogy divides students into groups based on race and then labels them because of their skin color. I know this because I've seen how it plays out in real classrooms. A perfect example are the racial privilege deconstructions that students as young as third grader are doing in school, like at Meyerholz and Cupertino. Another example is the model curriculum sample lesson 28. It differentiates based on race, telling teachers to ask white students, quote, what kind of white person they would have been, and ask non-white students a completely different question just because of skin color. Even if this lesson is removed, it was a CRT pedagogy that allowed it to be included by the IQC in the first place. Lawsuits have been filed across the country about critical race theory in schools.
Time.
Please use educators for excellence in ethnic studies comments as a guide to remove the CRT from the ESMC. Thank you for all you're doing for our students.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Justin Feldman. I am a UCLA graduate. I wanted to affirm my support for the Jemena Ethnic Studies Lesson Plan and I wanted to advocate that it be included inside of the Asian American Studies section because Jews of all backgrounds as an ethnic and religious identity are part of the Middle East, which is in the fabric of Asia. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Hidaka Mukai and I am a student who is advocating for the many students that are relying on the California High School proficiency exam being administered this spring to all students in order to move forward with their academic plans. We ask that the California Department of Education makes administering the exam in the spring
Caller, caller, I, I'm so sorry, that had to deal with the last item. We're only dealing with items that were not on the agenda. Once again, we have now 13 people in the queue. If, please remember that this public comment are for items not on the agenda. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Shapiro, a California parent. Please replace critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach to the ethnic studies model curriculum. I look to this board to lead so that an ethnic studies model curriculum promotes listening to each of our shared ethnic minority and immigrant group experiences. The current version still has an ideological agenda, which includes anti-capitalism, pro-militancy and support for communist governments and opposes self-determination for Jews in Israel and berates non-violent US civil rights leaders as docile. Critical ethnic studies leads to brainstorming, closed-mindedness and bullying of those with different opinions. In contrast, a constructive ethnic studies leads to analysis of multiple perspectives, informed decision-making and respectful dialogue. Please implement the changes recommended by the Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. California students need this approach. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Leah Renson. I'm a California parent. I'm asking you to please replace the critical ethnic studies approach with a constructive ethnic studies approach in the ESMC. Critical ethnic studies promotes violent content. Lessons currently include Mumia Abu Jamal, who often used Mel's quote, "political power grows out of the barrel of a gun," and he was convicted of first-degree murder of a police officer. Yuri Kouchiyama, who was a self-stated admirer of Osama bin Laden, Al Qaeda and the Shining Path. Oscar Lopez Rivera, a militant leader of the FALN, which carried out more than 130 US bombings and many other examples. The assignments require students to become these people, speaking in the voice of the individual to the whole class, forcing students to advocate to their peers the violent or offensive positions from the figures I just mentioned. This doesn't belong in K through 12 classrooms. There are better non-violent alternatives to model reform, such as Bryan Stevenson, Deanna Van Buren and Norm Mineta. Please implement the changes.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Victoria Samper. Please replace the critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in the ESMC. Despite the feedback provided to two previous drafts, I continue to see a curriculum that encourages people of color to see themselves as victims. This approach is shameful. It is hurtful to see the vibrant, positive Latino community characterized as victims. The curriculum perpetuates erroneous stereotypes rather than encouraging students to learn about one another as we truly are. Please modify the curriculum to stop teaching victimhood, divisiveness, oppression, violence and the Marxist narrative that is found throughout the curriculum as presented. Empower students by replacing the critical ethnic studies curriculum with a constructive ethnic studies approach by making the revisions submitted by the Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. Our students deserve better. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Noah Shupatinsky and I'm a former student of California school system. Please replace the critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in the ESMC. Growing up, I was raised on the stories of my grand and papa who fled racial violence in Jim Crow, Mississippi to California. Despite pervasive racial discrimination, white supremacy and terrorism, they achieved greatness. My papa was a self-employed businessman, owning his own garage as a mechanic, and my grand was a self-employed businesswoman who owned her home-based business. Both were pillars of their community who sent all of their seven children to college. Knowing the roots that I come from is inspirational and gives me the resilience I need to overcome my own obstacles as a black Jewish man in the US. The framework currently present in the critical ethnic studies ESMC ignores and degrades this legacy of black independence and autonomy, which will re-traumatize an entire generation of young black minds by forcing victimhood upon us. Most disturbingly, this approach does everything ethnic studies is supposed to fight against by centering the whites in their actions rather than focusing on the contributions of ethnic groups. Please implement the changes recommended by Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, okay, that call dropped. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Brandi Shupatinsky. Please replace critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in the ESMC. I'm a social worker who earned my MSW from the University of Southern California, working with victims and survivors of sexual abuse and family violence for most of my professional life. I've also had the opportunity to work with inner-city high school students. As a black social worker, it means the world to me to have been able to work as a professional with students from my own community. The ESMC is attempting to erase all that my foremothers and forefathers fought for, ignoring their blood, sweat and tears. They did not fight for equity and justice so that their descendants would be categorized as helpless victims. That's what the ESMC does. That is what critical race theory does. It not only centers whiteness with all of the talk about white privilege and white supremacy, it uplifts it, displacing everyone and everything else. Ethnic studies is supposed to be about making space for communities whose knowledge has been erased, ignored and excluded, not some crack ideology that is based on social vengeance disguised as social justice. The erasure of black icons from the ESMC in order to force a political narrative masquerading as curriculum is insulting to the black community. Please implement the changes recommended by the Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
I'm Jeff Carnell, a California parent and educator. I would like you to replace the critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in the ESMC. The ESMC draft uses a critical ethnic studies approach which imposes a narrow political ideology, promotes a militant anti-Western agenda, polarizes students, divides them into victims and oppressors and assumes predetermined answers. In contrast, constructive ethnic studies focuses on civic responsibility, builds inter-ethnic group understanding, exposes students to multiple political perspectives and encourages them to develop opinions based on inquiry. Both approaches address racism, but constructive ethnic studies leads to critical analysis of multiple perspectives, informed decision-making and respectful dialogue of opinions. Critical ethnic studies leads to doctrine regurgitation, closed-mindedness and bullying of those with different opinions. Please implement the changes recommended by the Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies and replace critical ethnic studies approach.
Thank you caller, your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Bella Yadigar and I'm a sophomore at Brentwood School in Los Angeles, California. I strongly support a curriculum that represents the experiences of the black, Latinx, Asian and Native American communities. I'm grateful for the work that has been done so far to revise this curriculum, but I'm here to share my concerns about some problems that still remain. I believe that we need to define antisemitism in the ESMC in a way that covers all forms of this hatred and reflects the real-life experiences of Jewish students and communities. As a first-generation American, my parents and grandparents faced persecution in Iran and were forced to flee from their country due to their religious beliefs. They experienced antisemitism in the classroom and daily life and were forced to live through these horrific experiences. This could have been prevented if the other students had a proper education on antisemitism. This is why we need to add the IHRA definition of antisemitism, which helps to educate about modern-day antisemitism and put an end to bias starting at a young age. Also, as a Middle Eastern Jew, I worry about the discrimination we will continue to face here in California if the curriculum did not include my community in more depth due to the lack of education about our experience struggles.
Thank you caller, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I have just received notification that we are entertaining comments about the Chesapeake exam. If you have a public comment regarding that particular exam, please feel free to call back on our call line. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Sherri Lewis. I've been an educator for many decades, most recently with the Los Angeles Unified School District, LAUSD. As an educator, I am very concerned about the use of critical race theory in the ethnic studies model curriculum. Critical race theory divides students into groups, into groups, often based on such superficial characteristics as skin color. As a teacher in LAUSD, I have encountered many different groups of students, including immigrant students from Mongolia, Egypt, Venezuela and Israel, so I know the importance of encouraging and promoting multiple perspectives. Critical race theory is extremely flawed because it is one-sided and does not provide a balanced approach. Furthermore, this theory is simplistic and seems to resemble propaganda more than education. If this theory is used in the model curriculum, it should be only one of multiple perspectives on ethnic studies, not the only perspective. Thank you for listening.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
I'm Jo, hi, I'm Joanne Donski, a California educator and parent. Please replace critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in the ESMC. Studies show that student benefits occur from ethnic studies courses without a critical ethnic studies approach. The ESMC cites Christine Fleeder's report, "The Academic and Social Value of Ethnic Studies." Many of the case studies were about reading literature Many of the case studies were about reading literature featuring people of color and written by non-white authors. These studies had nothing to do with colonialism, critical race theory, or critical political ideology. It is not necessary to impose narrow critical ethnic studies dogma or sacrifice inquiry to achieve the engagement benefit that we all desire for California's BIPOC students. Please make the changes recommended by the Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Claire Cheticle and I'm an occupational therapist who has worked in psychiatry and education as well for over 10 years. With a K through 12 group, mainstream students with special needs, learning differences, and physical disabilities, many abused, neglected, adopted, for whom race and ethnicity may be unknown. I'm concerned about the CRT component of the ESMC impact on the population. The idea that these students of all hues, whom experience oppression as disabled people, will be vulnerable and be put in a place to self-disclose about their privilege based on their skin color alone. The ESMC tells teachers to be attentive to trauma-informed educational practices and to have school counselors available. To potentially induce trauma via a curriculum would appear a risky endeavor and not appropriate or pedagogically sound. As educators and specialists, we are upheld to not cause harm to our students and have legal and ed code obligation to protect them. Please use Educators for Excellence in Ethnic Studies submission to the SBE as a guide for removing CRT in their educational work.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, I'm Barb Wyndham, a California parent. Please replace critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in ESMC. We all want ethnic studies to combat racism by helping students understand others and be empowered by studying leaders that look like they do. But the critical ethnic studies approach in ESMC doesn't lead there. Instead, it imposes a narrow political agenda on students. It focuses on critiquing empire-building and imperialism rather than on understanding an ethnic group's obstacles and contributions. It uses narrow ideological filters to choose examples and role models. It assumes answers rather than inviting analysis. The only exploration allowed is within the framework of critical ethnic studies ideology, never questioning its dogmatic underpinnings. If we want to promote inquiry in the classroom, we can't force feed predetermined answers. Please implement the changes recommended by Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. To replace the critical ethnic studies approach, remove ideological indoctrination, and revise the lessons to promote inquiry, not foregone conclusions. Thank you so much.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Arjaki Singh and I'm a sophomore in high school. I had made plans among many of my fellow student body to take the Chesapeake this year. Unfortunately, because of COVID, everything is getting held back, but I come to you asking if it would be possible to hold the Chesapeake before summer or sooner and have a set date soon, so we may know what we should plan for. Our futures in higher education plans are at risk. Many tests such as AP exams, GED exams, and other high school equivalency tests are taking place. The Chesapeake is the last option for some of my peers. It would be greatly appreciated if we had testing dates and more specific and promising times for the Chesapeake 2021. And even more helpful if the Chesapeake were to take place before or in the summer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for calling back. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is, my name is Jill Silverman. As a San Francisco parent of two, I'm asking you to replace the critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum. This is because the critical ethnic studies approach of the current draft undermines the potential for a robust curriculum which would empower students of color while building empathy and understanding among all students. Instead, the current draft defines and divides students by race, creating a hierarchy of victimhood. White students are made to feel guilty and students of color are encouraged to focus on their victimhood, thus creating a hostile and disempowering educational environment. A constructive approach would build understanding and uplift all students. To get it, to get it right and have its full impact, please adopt the revisions recommended by the Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. Thank you for your work and consideration.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
I'm Maddie Carmel, a California parent, grandparent, and educator. Please replace critical ethnic studies with a constructive approach in the ESMC. Three out of six guiding principles urge students to critique empire-building and colonialist beliefs. These principles shift the focus from ethnic studies to foreign policy and from countering racism in all its causes to a focus on colonialism. Surprisingly, despite AB 262's stated goal, there is no guiding principle to inspire student appreciation for the contributions of ethnic groups or any guiding value about empathy. Revised the guiding principles to remove the critical ethnic studies dogma and add focus on the histories, struggles, and accomplishments of ethnic groups with an emphasis on empathy rather than victimhood. Please implement the changes recommended by Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. Thank you for your consideration and all your work you're doing on this.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Hidaka Mukai and I'm a student who is advocating for the many students that are relying on the California High School Proficiency Exam being administered this spring to all students in order to move forward with their academic plans. We ask that the California Department of Education makes administering the exam in the spring and communicating with the Chesapeake Office a priority. Many students I've been in contact with, and myself, rely on the exam being administered this spring in order to go to community college this year. Delaying the exam would cause many problems for so many students. The Chesapeake Office has yet to give any clear, direct information on when the next test will be administered. However, they have said to some students that they will only allow new testers to take it during the late summer. This could jeopardize many students' academic career plans. We are urging you to prioritize administering a spring exam for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you caller for, for calling back on the topic. This concludes public comment for item three.
All right. Thank you very much to all of the callers and commenters and to the board for all of the good work today. And I hereby adjourn our February 2021 State Board of Education meeting at 2:50 PM. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you all at our March 2021 meeting or before. See you soon. Bye, everyone. Thanks.